It is seven o'clock. Our first item is into closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Section 2.2-3711, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. I mean, you've got to take a breath in the middle of one of those things. Community Policy Management Team, and two, Western Virginia Emergency Medical Services Council. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Monts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chairperson Kaskus?
Aye.
Seven Ours.
We are in closed session.
We're going to NP2. NP2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Ms. Blevins?
Motion.
Second.
We have motion and a second, Madam Secretary. It's all right. Take your time.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fitts.
Aye.
Ms. Bunn.
Uh, Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Chairperson.
Aye. All right, be it resolved, Board of Supervisors hereby ends their closed meeting to return to regular session. Next item, certification of the closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary, if you'll call or roll.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fitts.
Aye.
Ms. Bunn.
Aye.
Ms. Blevins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chairperson.
Aye.
Seven ahs.
All right, next up is our invocation and pledge, and if our tradition holds, then our county administrator will lead us.
Yes, if we could rise for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
All right, first item, presentations, recognitions, and award. New River Community Services Domestic Violence Awareness.
Sir, thank you. Mr. Chair, tonight we have James Pritchett and I believe Laura Beth Weaver, I didn't recognize you Laura Beth. These masks throw me off sometimes. Glad to have y'all here with us tonight.
Tonight, uh, hope everyone's having a good night. My name is James Pritchett, I'm the Director of New River Valley Community Services, and I first want to thank you for your support for our agency and the services we provide. I was asked tonight to come and talk about domestic violence, it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I brought Laura Beth Weaver with me. She's the Director of the Women's Resource Center, and I'll introduce her in a minute and let her talk about our partnership. As you're well aware, New River Valley Community Services is the local provider of behavioral health care, which includes services for individuals and families living with mental illness, substance use, and/or develop neurodisabilities. We know all too well that our communities are not immune from the issue, and the issue does not discriminate based on race or economic standing, and that issue is domestic violence. New River Valley Community Services serves many individuals that have either been a victim of recent abuse, suffered the long-term impacts of abuse from their past, and/or have witnessed these traumatic events. Domestic violence victims, as well as those who witness it, often develop significant mental health issues and/or substance use disorders. New River Valley Community Services offers many programs for those impacted, either adults or children. We have specific evidence-based treatment programs that are designed to assist individuals improve their lives and overcome the trauma associated with this violence. Our partnership with the Women's Resource Center has resulted in many grant applications, a lot of services that were developed specifically for this population, as well as community outreach. This past month, being Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we specifically partnered with the Women's Resource Center to do some outreach to educate the community on the importance of addressing this issue, as well as seeking treatment. The important work, and work that has to be supported by the community, should not go unnoticed because it takes all of us to address this issue. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Weaver and let her describe our partnership and outreach.
Thank you, James. Thank you all for having us this evening, it is good to see you all. The Women's Resource Center appreciates our partnership, our longstanding partnership with Montgomery County Board of Supervisors. Mr. King, I am a resident of greater Riner, Virginia, and I think last time I saw you, you were serving up some oysters of the last symbols of normalcy before the pandemic hit, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
It's good to see you. So, the Women's Resource Center partners with many organizations, but certainly of note this evening is the New River Valley Community Services. As you all know, we are the Commonwealth's oldest domestic violence program. It started right here in Christiansburg, Virginia, which is very exciting. And through all of those years, since the mid-'70s when we started our relationship with New River Valley Community Services and with you all, it's been very important. Folks come to us, to our shelter, to our transitional housing, or to our counselors, seeking refuge, seeking a safe place, seeking someone who will believe them and help them navigate the criminal justice system, or housing, or schooling, or just what it means to believe and have locks on the doors that work, and a sense of safety. And our partnership with the staff at New River Valley Community Services helps us offer an even more holistic approach to domestic violence. Many folks come to us using substances for reasons that are, I think frankly understandable, given what they survive. And so our work with the 401 Peer Center recently has been really encouraging and a wonderful place for our folks to find yet another light or beacon of hope. Last year, we provided residential services for over 9,000 nights of safe shelter, either in our emergency or transitional housing facilities. So those are nights of shelter where folks might otherwise be homeless or at home with an abuser in an unsafe situation. Our services are available to men, women, and children. We've been seeing an increase in men reaching out for our services this year. For reasons, if you wanted to come to a two-day workshop, we could unpack together. But what we know is that domestic violence is something that crosses all socio-ecological boundaries. It happens in homes that look like my home, in your home, and it happens in homes that look different than ours. And so it is with the partnership with folks like the Community Services Board that this community is able to, in a real and day-to-day way, address the issue of safety for our residents. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and you all have later on your agenda an opportunity to make a proclamation to that point, and I'm really proud and excited about that. And I would say that I appreciate the opportunity in October to pause and talk about domestic violence, and know that with your support, our staff and Mr. Pritchett's staff are able to address this issue all year long. So, thank you.
Any questions?
I think we might have some, we'll go around the room and see. Supervisor Biggs, do you have any questions?
Well, first I want to compliment both of you on everything that you're doing, especially during this challenging time, and it so happens that this is Staff Appreciation Week for New River Valley Community Services, and we also want you to know that we appreciate you. I was reading the paper today, and I sort of sent this to James earlier. Our rate has gone up in the courts with this, is that what I read? Can you comment on that?
I think one thing that we've been concerned about with the pandemic is the increase in domestic violence, because when you can't get out, and people don't identify, and people have no place to go because they're quarantined, domestic violence lives and breeds in secrecy. And so we've been talking about that from day one, on how we can reach out to the community and make sure that they have places that they can report it or seek help. And so we've been able to, at our agency, do a lot of support through telehealth. I think the Women's Resource Center has also probably increased a lot of their outreach through chat lines, through the phone, but we are well aware of the increase. And, you know, when we see it kind of, I guess, emerge in our court systems, that is troubling, but the good thing is, is it's being identified. And so that makes me somewhat saddened, and yet excited that it's being identified so we can address it. What would you like to add?
I would agree with all of those things, the only thing I would add is that one of the trends we have seen that is harder to quantify than the numbers of protective orders or whatever, is that our staff are reporting that all of the folks they're talking with, the stories of violence seem to be more troubling, or more severe. And so, and so what we know is that even as the numbers are rising, the difficulty of the cases and the trauma that people are experiencing is also increasing, and that's harder to quantify.
Okay, well, thank you both for being here and spreading the word, and hopefully people that watch this later on television or on YouTube will, you know. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
Really appreciate what you guys do, I know it's a great service to the community. I retired from Virginia Tech Police Department, and I was really familiar with the Women's Center there on campus. One of my questions is, and it's probably one of you can't answer, is I know even then they didn't capture all the people that really needed the service. Either they were afraid to come in, or they didn't know about it, or those sort of things. I guess that's still a problem, and then do you know how big a problem?
It is something that we're concerned about, and so what we try to do is provide as much outreach through education and just general awareness campaigns, so people do know where to reach out to get help, whether it is the Women's Resource Center, or our agency, or the local law enforcement. It's important that we all try to address this and identify it, because the negative impacts we all see every day, whether it's increased incarceration rates, whether it's increased foster care numbers, I mean, it impacts a lot of the things that we see every day.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, it's important that everybody try to recognize it and make sure that they can point people in the right direction.
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Supervisor Demonts.
Hi, thank you guys both for being here this evening. I think it's important to really reiterate that domestic violence, substance abuse disorders, mental health crisis and emergencies really doesn't know any racial or socioeconomic boundary line, so it does affect kind of across the board, all segments of our population. The work that both of you do is so valuable to our community. I would like to give both of you an opportunity to tell the members of our community that are watching, what can they do to support you? Is there a place that they can go to make donations? Are there items that you need in your organizations that might be beneficial as we go through this month and every month of the year?
Thank you, April, absolutely. So, our organization is a nonprofit, and we are here at the New River Valley, and you can go to wrcnrv.org/donate, and do a donation there. And certainly, we always welcome monetary donations, but also pantry items and things for our houses. And so the way I make this accessible for folks is, when I'm grocery shopping, all the things that I need at my house, when I'm household shopping, it's time to buy new towels. The things that we need at my house are the things that we need at the Women's Resource Center as well, and those things will always go to support our men, women, and children who access our services. So, when paper towels are on sale at the New Food City, I'm gonna buy a stack for myself at home and a stack that goes with me to work the next day. And so those sorts of things are very accessible and very tangible. The other thing I would ask in support of the Women's Resource Center, but also the larger, greater good that we're working towards, this vision of a community free of violence, and this vision of a community where everyone feels safe and supported, is that if you know someone who's struggling with domestic violence, or with substance abuse issues, or with mental health issues, help us normalize reaching out for help, right? Help us make it okay to call a hotline, or to call Access. Help us make it okay to talk about the struggles we're having. I think one of the reasons we're seeing the numbers go up, to your point earlier, is that domestic violence breeds in isolation, right? Domestic violence depends on isolation to happen, and we're having a lot of that for really good reasons, the isolation and the staying at home. And so, I would be remiss if I didn't say, yes, please send us your money, and your paper towels, and your Lhasa wipes. But also, please call us if you need help, and help us normalize that asking for help process. Our hotline, and I think this is true for you all as well, is called a crisis hotline, but you don't have to be in crisis to call and ask for help. We've got folks 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, I took my turn on Christmas a little while back. We're always there waiting to be an advocate for someone. So whether it's you or someone you know, normalizing help-seeking behavior is just as beneficial to our community as your donation.
I would say reducing that stigma associated with asking for help is one big step. For those who want to contribute monetarily, I would encourage you to reach out to some of our local nonprofits to support them during this hard time, because fundraising's been difficult for them. For New River Valley Community Services, I would say if people were really interested and passionate about these issues, whether it's substance abuse prevention, or domestic violence abuse prevention, that you reach out to us and let us know your concerns, because we have specific prevention and wellness coalitions, prevention coalitions in each jurisdiction that we serve, and we're always looking for individuals who have a passion and who want to volunteer their time to work on these activities.
Can you both tell me your crisis hotline numbers, the Access, and then the Women's Resource Center hotline phone number?
Access is 961-840-0.
Thank you.
And our hotline is 639-1123. And we've also added a chat feature on our website this year, so that people can chat with an advocate if being overheard talking on the phone would be dangerous, and so that information is also on our website.
Thank you both so much for what you do, for the love that you show every day to our community, it's very appreciated.
Supervisor King.
Don't have no question, but I do want to tell you how much I do appreciate all your hard work, what you do for the communities. I mean, this is one thing that helps the communities whole, Montgomery, Rafferty, everybody. I mean, that's one thing, you know, I'm really passionate about, you know, I'm volunteer fire department. But I do, I do want to express one thing to the citizens out here. You know, domestic violence is nothing to be ashamed of. I mean, you didn't cause it, it's just some predicament that people get seen. So I encourage you to reach out to these people. Reach out to law enforcement if you have to. I mean, like I said, it's not your fault. And I do appreciate, personally, if anything I can do for either one of you, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Blevins.
Thank you both, this is a very valuable service for our community, and you should be committed for your dedication to our citizens. And I totally agree, awareness, education, that people know that you can ask for help, that there is hope, that the stigma, whether it's mental illness, whether it's domestic, and sometimes times people don't realize that it is domestic violence, abuse. It could be verbal abuse, and they're afraid to ask, and I am concerned with the COVID-19 crisis, that because we don't have eyes where people may not be going to work, or their friends, and they're isolated, that the increased amount of cases, and you're saying that they're more severe. And so I am very concerned about that, because when you're isolated, you're not going to work, your coworker may not realize that something's different, or maybe there's physical abuse. But it's just, I love the fact that you're making awareness, anything we can do to support it. We're here for you, it's a great service to our citizens, and I just appreciate you greatly.
Vice Chair Ball.
I have a couple of questions. Do you all serve everyone that needs your service? Meaning, if someone reaches out to you, you don't turn anybody away?
Absolutely.
Yes.
And if you had 10% more demand, could you service that?
We would try our best, and I think we've always managed to figure out how to serve those in need.
We'd come to you if we had 10% more.
Thank you very much, Ms. Laura Beth. What more do you need to draw the people who you're not reaching? You did mention, you know, that we, how do we normalize? And I'd like you to talk about that specifically. But my sense is, you know, there might be someone who's watching this video that has an extra million dollars out there that if you knew you could use $100,000 right now, you'd do this, this, and this, and you would draw in another 25 per month during COVID, or whatever your numbers are, you know? So can you talk to that, what do you need if you could draw more people in? And also, could you talk to us about how do we be advocates and/or normalize to encourage our friends? Or, you know, get the enough, what do you call it, courage to call?
I think one issue is to not be afraid to talk about it. Whether that is substance abuse issues, substance use disorders, whether that's mental health, whether it's domestic violence, is not to be afraid to ask the questions. If you suspect something's going on with your neighbor, or with someone in the parking lot, not to be afraid to just ask, do you need help? What's going on, how can I help you? I think that's a big step. Also thinking supporting some of these local campaigns that we do, that the Women's Resource Center does, I think that's of great value. We're constantly looking for ways to get the word out. A big push over the last A big push over the last, I'm gonna say, two or three years for us has been social media and trying to push out the message there, because a lot of folks are looking at social media more than ever these days. And so how do we get the word out there to make sure people know that there's services available, that they're not alone, and they can reach out for help? When it comes to resources and what we need, I think there's always gonna be the need for more support financially, to meet the growing need. We've seen that over the past several years with substance use issues. We've seen it with mental health issues. I think the same's true with domestic violence. The more resources that we have, the more we can serve. I think, I think about substance abuse disorders over the past five years, our communities have really came, they've come a long way in how they approach substance use problems in the community, how they look at them, how they seek to find resources and support for people. They don't just blame the victims anymore, or the people suffering through these problems. We've come a long way, so if we can apply that philosophy and strategy to these other situations, I think we can do monumental things.
And I know $100,000 is a drop in the bucket, Laura Beth, but, you know, let's say you do have an angel out there that is interested in helping.
Sure. So if somebody has an extra $100,000 that they'd like to throw our way, come along with James and I, and we can help you find a good way to spend that money, in good stewardship towards a vision of a safer community, right? I think that every executive director has a list in the back of their head of what they would do if that phone call were to come in, and different ways to support the community. And that would be fantastic, but also what is fantastic is the community seeing and hearing from each of you about how important this is. Hearing from their supervisor, domestic violence is not your fault. Mr. King, it sounds different coming from you than it sounds coming from me, right? It's my career, it's my job. And so there's power in that. When I think about COVID, and we've made it for a long time without saying that word yet, and I'm sorry if people want to say it, but when I think about the last several months, there are some silver linings that have come out of that. And one of those is the ways that our local governments have really rallied around nonprofits. And some really exciting work has been done in the New River Valley to the benefit of the citizens of the New River Valley. And the other thing I would say is, because of the predicament that we're in, I think more folks are watching you all at these meetings, which means more folks are having the opportunity to hear you say, if you're a domestic violence victim, it's not your fault. And so utilizing the power that you all have as our local elected officials has been, I think, the silver lining for this, because people are tuning in more and paying closer attention to, I think, what all of us in leadership are doing. And so that's a really unique opportunity. So recently, I went and did a staff training with somebody who I met in a meeting very similar to this, who called me and said, I've seen some really disturbing statistics around domestic violence with my staff, can you come help me talk with them about it? So sometimes it's just that phone call, right? You and I are gonna see each other tomorrow morning. We have, we live in community together, aside from being on the day of this evening, right? And so utilizing those relationships, calling Mr. Prageri if you have a question, or an idea, or wanna be involved in those, in those coalitions, send all the $100,000 our way. Like, I'm not trying to downplay that. But also the relationships that we build as a community, we're here for the long haul and for the long haul vision of a safer community. So I hope to see you again before next October.
I also want to say that some of the, we, most of the donations you probably do receive are like $25 or $50, but you get them from a lot of people. That makes a huge difference, right?
Absolutely.
You didn't mention where to drop off the towels, the canned goods, and stuff like that.
I didn't. So you can, if you call, if you were to call our hotline or check our website, it would send you to our public office, which is in Radford at 1217 Grove Avenue. And you can drop those off. But also, if your, say, fire department does a drive, we can also come pick those up. So you can just give us a call, and we'll figure out what works best for you.
I have been reporters. I want to thank you all for what you do. Laura Beth, your Women's Resource Center's annual luncheon had to be canceled and likely has, won't happen again next year, next spring, like it usually does. Insight Safety, the videos that you have at that luncheon, the impactful stories of survivors are just mind blowing. You know, I brought some friends to, the first one that I attended, and then a couple years later, one of those friends was, you know, domestic violence. So I was blown away to find that out, but one of my sisters was too. So it's, it's close to home, and yet it's not far away too. So again, thank you for everything that you do, and keep up your great work, and let us know how we can help.
One of the newest initiatives, it's probably about a year old, that we've started is really a coalition and community that started here in Montgomery County, and it's just expanded New River wide. And it's, it's around trauma, building a trauma-informed community. And so it's bringing people together from different agencies and organizations, and talking about how we create a shared language around this issue, because we know these events really have serious and long-lasting impacts on individuals. And one of your own is actually a member of that coalition, and we have a lot of support from the judges, law enforcement, and the school systems around trying to bring this coalition together and learn what we can do as a community to address these issues.
And we have a meeting tomorrow, right?
I've just got one question, and I've been listening to all the information you've been providing. It's been excellent, and we really appreciate that. Me, a retired law enforcement person myself, I've, I've had to utilize or refer people to your services over the years, and so it's definitely, without question, something that's desperately needed. But as I was listening to you, I started thinking, you know, I've never asked this question, and, and I don't know if there is an answer, but I was kind of curious as to, how much abuse does a person put up with before they come and see you? Or how long of a period of time does somebody endure that before they actually contact you? Do you have an average?
Sure. That's a, that's a really great question, and it's one that we get a lot. Statistics tell us that folks who are experiencing domestic violence leave seven to 10 times before staying gone. Leaving is, is difficult, is dangerous, it can be the most lethal time in a victim's life, is that two weeks after they leave the domestic violence situation. And so we know that leaving and going back is part of the pattern. But what's interesting is, and I'm not trying to make light of the situation, but what's interesting is, seven to 10 times isn't nearly as many times as I have started and failed to keep up an exercise regimen, or a diet as described by my doctor. And so when we talk about the, the amount of abuse someone endures before leaving, what's really important for us to frame up is what else is going on, and what are the reasons that they might say? And the flip, the flip side of that, for me, would be, how much abuse is one person willing to put on another person? For me, the question is more about how much trauma one person is willing to visit upon another human who they say they love before it stops. And so, so what we know is that, that we as humans make the best decisions we can with the information that we have, and our desire to be safe and to survive. And so for some people, they leave very quickly and stay gone, and have the support system to, to have safe lives aside from that abusive relationship. For some of us, though, it's a much longer process, and, and that can be frustrating. And that, and that can be frustrating, but the more we work with, and I know that you, I'm sure, as a law enforcement officer, know that there are compelling reasons why people might endure that trauma. And so our job is to recognize that change takes time, change in any capacity takes time, and that change model, we know, cycles. And so our job is to stand there and help folks get off the merry-go-round whenever they're ready, and, and find a way to stay off in a safe way. Hope that addresses.
As law enforcement, it has always been either, every year, either number one or number two, the most dangerous call that police can respond to. And I recall, and maybe Daryl does too, that when we go through training for domestic violence, one of the things that we're taught is, you gotta be extra careful, because while you're arresting the person doing the physical harm, the other person who has been abused may attack you. And I've actually seen that happen, and we scratch our heads and say, there's a lot of emotion flowing, and a lot of decisions that are being made very irrationally, and it's, it just creates such a dangerous situation there. But we do, we do appreciate you all doing what you're doing, because we, somebody has to do it. Somebody has to step up and help folks find their way out. I do have one last question, though. This one has to do with my own family. My wife is demanding that I stay in my house. Is that considered abuse?
I don't think so.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. I was looking for some help, but thank you both for, for coming. Yeah, we probably need to have you here more often, and we definitely, and I think everyone here agrees, that we need to spread the word and, and get, get folks help that need it.
For sure.
Appreciate you.
Thank you all for being here.
They were very careful. I didn't see them touch anything up there.
Somebody, one of them leaned.
Oh, leaned.
But no hands, so I think it's okay.
Oh, Emily said? Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, our next item is, we have several public hearings, and I guess Emily is gonna come forward and give us a little background on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Emily.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Planning Commission would like a little rest time for you guys. Tonight, I'm going to review our AFD renewals for this year, and we're gonna jump right in to the fact that we have information in our Uncle about Agatha Orstel districts and their purpose, which is to encourage protection of Agatha Orstel land. And this is by certain uses. I will pause to say that this section is the one that you just recently updated, and so there's now a six and a seven that say data calls and telecommunications facilities. But these sections go hand in hand with the enabling legislation from the state of Virginia, and in the Commonwealth of Virginia, agriculture and forestry are very important to our culture and to our economy, and that's why the state enables these for you. So after the enable and critical legislation, it goes in to talk about basically what an AFD has to be. So it has to have that core 200 acres, and then it gives us some parameters that ultimately the local governing body decide on. So that's you guys, and we're going to talk about districts three, four, and five, and your decision on whether to continue, modify, or terminate the districts in any conditions. So just because this works better, you'll have to trust me, we're gonna start with AFD four. We're not gonna go into miracle order. AFD four is our Silver Lake Road District. It was originally formed in 1980, last renewed in 2012, because you'll remember, these are eight-year cycles. We had a couple that we renewed last year, and so these come up every eight years. It's currently just over 1,600 acres and has 20 landowners. We did get a request to remain of 130 acres, but the district still has over 1,500 acres. If you were to look at Silver Lake on a map, it looks something like this. We had some maps included in your packet that basically follow the same color structure. It lets you know. Those green ones, they contacted us when we sent out the information saying they did want to renew. The darker burgundy colors contacted us to say that they wanted to withdraw. The yellow parcel you see here indicated they wanted to add an extra parcel, and then the dark blues, which we'll, we'll show a few of those, they did not provide a response. And just so that you know what this process looks like, staff sends a letter with the applications and detailed instructions early in the year. You'll remember, I think June, you authorized us to begin that. At that point, we give them a deadline, and then, like, good staff, we give them a reminder with a new deadline and new forms. This year, we even were able to do them electronically via DocuSign, and anyone who's already in a conservation easement does not have a fee, and anyone who's choosing to renew, we sent them a transmittal. It's a $20 fee. So that's the process. But we still had, as you'll see, some folks who did not respond. If they don't respond, who have written requests to withdraw, then it is the determination of the county attorney that they remain in the district, because it's very specific that to come out, you have to put it in writing that you'd like to withdraw. So we did have the 130 acres from these property owners. If you were looking at these zoomed in on the map, you can see the size of the one that's 112 by itself. And then this one, which is actually near the Silver Lake Road area, I'm just outside the town of Christiansburg, is several parcels that sort of make up that little piano key look there, that they also decided to withdraw. This is right along Route 11, and then if you come up at an angle there, that is Vernon Street, just past Aegis. This is the parcel that's being addition, added by Mr. Young, it's an extra 28 acres. And then we always take a look when they do say they have a request to see how the land's currently being used, and make sure they have a plan in place with the Commissioner of Rennies Office. We had no response from just these three parcels here. So this is what AFD four looks like in its entirety, and as you can see, while we did lose several and gain the one, it's still a fairly intact district. The AFD committee met on September the 3rd and agreed that the district, as it remained, was in good standing, recommended renewing it for another eight years with the same conditions that the board initially put on there in 1980. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on the 21st, and they made the same recommendation. So although District Four looks different, ultimately, it is still intact, can remain a district on its own, and that is staff's recommendation for you, as well as the AFD Committee and Planning Commission. So it was unanimous. Now we'll go to District Five, Staying Out of Order. This was also originally formed in 1980 and renewed last in 2012. It's currently around 6,700 acres, and we got a withdrawal request for just over 1,000. There were also no additions requested in this district. If you're looking at this one on the map, you can see we're zoomed out to a much further resolution. You can see the village of Reiner, and then you can see all the greens, the colors are gonna stay the same. Notified they wanted to renew. Your withdrawals are still these very dark burgundy colors. No response is the sort of pale gray color, and this sort of gives you a little bit of scale. You can see the town of Christiansburg edge up there at the top, coming down Route 8, here's the village. So that sort of gives you a sense of how District Five lays out. District Five's name is Reiner, which sounds really well. We had withdrawals, like I mentioned, over 1,000 acres from all of these citizens. And if you zoomed in on several of the withdrawal areas, you can see some were grouped and some were just single large parcels that were withdrawn. were just single large parcels that were withdrawn. Because the district was shown at such a large scale, we have a few of these that give you a sense of where those parcels are. These 621 acres represent people that we did not hear from, and as I mentioned, they will remain part of District five. We're going to jump straight into District three, Little River. It proved to be our treble district this year. Same as the others, formed in 1980, renewed eight years ago, currently 1,700 acres, but just under 900 acres requested to withdraw. So when you look at this district, if you're really good with maps, since this doesn't have a lot of landmarks on it, you would notice that we are very close to the Reiner District that we were just looking at. So you can see the Montgomery County-Floyd line here at the bottom of the page, actually along the river there. The requested withdrawals were from these landowners on these parcels for, again, just under 900 acres. And they were substantial. You can see they made up large parcels, groupings of large parcels, and really started to erode the district. This particular parcel was nearly 300 acres, and when he decided to withdraw, these smaller parcels, which are currently indicated they'd like to stay in the district, we actually have to let them know they can't stay in the district. So without having the other parcels there, also, these represented about an acre. So unless they're grouped with other agroforestry uses, they really don't qualify for any sort of uses on their end. So we identified these here as what we're calling necessary removals because they would just really be one-acre sort of specs out in the middle of the Little River area. We did get two property owners who, when we contacted, had other parcels they wanted to add, both Mr. Cox and Mr. Groot. So you can see them here on this. This is Indian Valley where Mr. Cox's were. And then, actually, I think both of these are Cox's, yep. And Mr. Groot's are actually all the way down Blue Springs Road. So we did not have response from these property owners for approximately 200 acres. And so the core of District three that originated, that was original when we started, fell apart because it could not meet the state code requirements we talked about earlier for minimum code, minimum core in the code. So we've actually had this come up several times before. It's the nature of Manovery, fast-growing and developing county. Our recommendation was to combine the two. As we showed geographically, they basically overlap already. You did have a couple of parcels that could have gone either way already. So by joining the two, you have the opportunity for multiple core areas. So should we be talking about this in eight years, or whoever is here in eight years be talking about this, they would have some options available to them. So our recommendation, and what you'll see this evening, is to rename District five to Reiner Little River, bring that total acreage to the 6601. And as I mentioned, it's happened in the past and has preserved these districts. If you were to look at it today as proposed, it would look like this. As you can see, this is a pretty wide geography. If you're looking at 81 here on the top and Route eight coming all the way down here to Floyd in the middle here, this is a large segment of the county. But this area, similar to what we saw last year with crisis work, is also under a lot of growth and development pressure. And so to be able to hold its integrity for another eight years with this many parcels, we think's a great opportunity. So we made that recommendation to the AFD committee and the planning commission, and they agreed that combining them was the best way to preserve them, keep everyone who was interested in renewing in the district, and to keep the same conditions that were on them So we had the unanimous referral from the AFD committee as well as the planning commission. And that is my presentation for you tonight. I'm glad to answer any questions you have before you open the hearing.
We're going to do this a little different. Does anybody have a question?
No.
No? Well, you got off easy, Emily. If you want to, let me run through these hearings, and then we'll bring you back up for the other one. We had no one sign up for the hearing, and we're going to go ahead and start in order, because that's how we do things here, with AFD number three. And no one has signed up, but if you would like to come and speak, you would have four minutes to state your name and address. Seeing no one come forward, this hearing for AFD three is closed. Next up is AFD four. Same information. If anyone would like to come up and speak, they may. Seeing no one come forward, AFD four is closed. Next, we have AFD five. Same information. No one's coming forward. Did you have your hand up in the back there, sir? Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and close AFD five. Next up, boundary adjustment agreement, Town of Blacksburg.
I do not have anything to share with you on this, but I do have it graphically available. And do you want the map up or the plaque? Or both?
Whichever one you think is better.
I think this is better. The parcels that you'll be talking about are these sort of in the center of the screen here.
Right.
One, two, three. And the plaque you had is a little less helpful, I think, than the...
Yeah. Can you just give them the boundaries?
Absolutely. So if you're, if we're looking at the three subject parcels, they're sort of here in the middle of the screen. This is the bypass. You can see the smart right over here, BTTI. This is the, this is the new school that was just constructed that you can see from the bypass. And then this is the hotel that was just torn down where the caboose was. So...
Former Days Inn, yep.
Former Days Inn. And then this right here is the yellow sulfur, if you're at the...
Remax.
Warm Hearth Interchange.
The cross from...
Remax.
The cross, yeah, Remax on the corner there. And then this is the hospital.
And was the current zoning at Bend, the county?
Oh, these are, they are mostly zoned. The one here on the top is known general business. This is a cemetery parcel. It's not zoned. It's currently got a well-established use. And the green here is conservation. For C1, this area was actually surplus that came from after the bypass was done, and the right-of-way surplus was made available to adjacent properties, and that's what Mr. Jen provided.
Now, is water currently available there that you know? County water?
The county does not have utilities available in this area specifically. Could water get there? Yes, we have water over here by Davis and Triangle. So water, it would just be the cost of getting it over, it'd still be a pretty good cost. Sewer, I don't think is a possibility for us in this area. Triangle Street here, those water meters, I mean, those sewer meters there, now I have that backwards. That's town water. We have our sewer there.
Yeah, I was going to say, the closest town you took, Blacksburg had utilities at the former hotel site, and I...
And also at the new school.
They have it at the school, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Just to give this in context, the Helen, it's Douglas and Helen Jones trustees, they're the owners, but they're owned by Douglas and Helen. It's, this request was on their behalf. They went to the town and then to us. I think the purpose behind it is they want utilities in order to develop. The town is going through their process of, for the boundary, they, I think their public hearing is this week, maybe tomorrow. Yeah. There's no rush on the approval because there's still, the town needs to do a little bit more analysis on what they think the town zoning is going to be. What town planning staff will tell us, at least conceptually, at general or a high level of view at this point, is that it'll most likely be some type of office use. But it'll definitely be, we think, commercial. Obviously, this will help us. Whatever's put in there will give us a tax base. If it is office, we won't lose any taxes, we'll only gain because it'll be developed. And so it's about 10 acres roughly. And as Emily said, it's right off Genau and not far from the bypass. Well, if you guys have any questions. Are there any questions? Most likely come back for your consideration in January, is what we're thinking.
I have an important question. So which way are they wanting to go with it? The dotted line, is that what is now on the plaque? I mean, I can't see, I can't tell anything about that map.
Yeah, the plaque's not great.
That's why we sort of decided to go with the... Okay, so if you're looking at the plaque, this boundary here is the existing on the north. And then they want to bring it here.
Yeah, add everything in the middle.
Yeah, so if these three parcels, this line would come to there.
All right. That's all, that's all, huh?
I have a timing question.
All right.
Probably for Marty. So if we're doing the public hearing tonight, and this doesn't come back as a new business item until January, what's the timeline? 90 days or...
There's really not one, just a reasonable time. Generally, we have a 90-day rule on zoning. Like if we advertise them, then don't take action, we generally re-advertise them. But I think for this, we probably wouldn't be too worried about that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. For this public hearing, if there's anyone that would like to come forward, you need to state your name and address, and you have four minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to go ahead and close that hearing also. That is the end of public hearings. Next up is public address. Again, no one has signed up. If there's anyone that would like to come forward for public address, name and address, and you have four minutes. Going once, going twice. I don't see anyone coming forward, so we are going to close public address. Next item is addendum.
No addendum this evening, Mr. Chair.
No addendum. Next up is items of consent. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, if you will call a roll.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Madden?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Mott?
Aye.
Chair for Ziegelski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Next up is the, is our work session. Is there a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, you can pick which one you want. I think they both sounded off at the same time, but is there any discussion before we go into work session? Madam Secretary, go ahead. Call a roll.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Madden?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair for Ziegelski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. First up, CARES Act funding update.
CARES Act funding update. And I'm going to recognize our Finance Director, Angie Hewle, for that.
This thing keeps getting thicker and thicker, doesn't it?
Thanks, Angie.
Good to talk to you.
Good evening. I'm going to give you another CARES update. We're not going to go into quite as much detail as I have the past two times, but we wanted to keep you up to date on what's going on with our projects. And I've spoken to you the past two times that we've talked about the CARES Act, about how much funding the county got and what our distributions were to the towns and to the county task force. And that leaves us a balance of about $4.9 million. And we are using that money for facility improvements, equipment vehicles, technology, COVID leave, and other COVID-related expenses. It also includes funding for our business, small business grants, our childcare grants, our nonprofit grants, and the new dining expansion grants. So here's a very busy slide with lots of numbers on it. And this is similar to a slide that I gave you before. It's just been updated. A couple items I will point out. The disinfecting, sanitizing, social distancing improvements, which is the third item we own, has increased substantially since the last time we went over this chart. One of the main reasons for that is some of the fire departments needed additional self-contained breathing apparatuses, but not all of them did. So we, at this point, have put them in the county's pot of money, not the county's task force, because it's for everyone to share equally. It could go in either bucket, but that's the bucket we've chosen right now to put it in. And I think the other major increase since last time are the vehicles. We had 11 last time. We've now moved that up to 20. And if you remember, there was guidance from the State Department of Labor that requires if we have more than one person riding in a vehicle, they have to wear respirator-type protection on their faces. So instead of spending respirators and using them for those individuals, we purchased vehicles because we wanted to save those for first-response type situations. Another item that's new is a tourism reopening campaign, and that's with Lisa Lately to reopen the region of Montgomery County. That's a marketing campaign, and those costs will just go through the end of December. We haven't talked a whole lot about the grants because last time I came, we had just started the grant program. But it's well underway now, and I'm only going to report about the county's portion of the grants. And to remind you, the way that works, all of these grants are being administered through a portal, a web portal. And Blacksburg, the town of Christiansburg, and Montgomery County all are using the same portal. So people have the same guidelines, they file for their applications the same way, and then we review the grants based on where the business or entity is located. Nonprofits are handled a little bit differently, but for the small business grants, we've gotten 17 completed applications to date, and those did close on September 30th. A couple of those decided not to participate, and then there's one that we're waiting on a little bit more information for. So that's pretty much the difference between the total grant awards and the estimated final grant awards for the small businesses. The towns have much larger numbers for those than the county does. The nonprofit grants do work differently because our nonprofits serve the whole county. So the way those work, people apply one time, then we figure out that we've requested from them how many clients they serve in the unincorporated portion of the county versus the two towns, and then we allocate funding in that manner. Those grants closed on October the 15th. Those grants closed on October the 15th. So there are 47 applications completed to date that are for, that the county will be part of. Some of them are just in the county, but most of them are in the county and the towns. And the number of grants that have been awarded so far is 13. We're still working through those. Those are a little bit harder because there's more qualitative information. There is definitely a clear path to take, but it's just a little bit more to get through because of looking at the services that are provided and the documentation that has to be provided to us to make sure they comply with the CARES Act. So you can see that based on the grants we've looked at so far, this is what the funding would look like from the county. That assumes that all of the nonprofits that have applied would receive their full request, the $287,000. Then the Child Care Center Grant is the next one, which closes on November the 1st. So far for the county, there are only two applications in progress. They are not complete yet, but they are in the system. And if those were awarded, that would be $37,500. And then finally, the Dining Expansion Grant, which closes on November the 9th, that there are none in the county so far. But that's a breathing program, so we could get some. We don't anticipate that we will get a whole lot, if any, because of the nature of that. But that's the, that we did offer that because the other jurisdictions were. So to summarize, our total allocation for the county, as I said, is $4.9 million. Our estimated expenses through the end of December are $3.1 million. And then the grant estimated expenses are about $400,000. So that leaves us with about $1.4 million. People are still making requests for CARES expenditures, and there are some really good ones that are coming through. So there, there might be more as we move forward. And this does not include hazard pay for eligible employees. The 1.3 does not include that. Or does, I've not taken anything out for hazard pay, is what I'm trying to say. And another factor is that the Montgomery County Task Force, which received just over $4 million, may not spend all of their allocation either. Currently, with their current budget, it doesn't look like they'll spend their whole allocation. So the county could divide that amongst us and the towns as well if they don't. I'm going to switch. We're going to go to the new track now, ready? Or you want to switch now?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Because we can, I'm sure we can bombard you with the questions later.
Yeah. Um, the next thing that we wanted to talk to you about tonight, there have been some questions about our different categories of dollars. So at the last meeting that I spoke to you, we talked about how the year had gone for the first quarter and how much money was left at the end of the year. So the dollars that we had, if you remember at the end of my favorite chart, was $10.3 billion. Some potential uses for those funding, for those funds included county carryforwards, which we think will be a million to a million and a half dollars, renovations of the former sheriff's office, and then an increase in the reserve for the care community. That totals $3.6 million, which leaves 6.7. So again, this is how much money we had at the end of June. So you can only spend these dollars one time. That's it, then they're gone. So capital projects, reserve funds, one-time pay supplements are examples of things that those could be used for. And then if you recall, when we passed the FY '21 budget, we deferred $8 million now in the county dollars and about $5.4 million for the schools. These dollars are recurring, so they could be used for ongoing expenses. However, we have to be careful about that because we aren't certain how the year's going to end or what's going to happen with the funding for the schools from this date. I know this next slide is really hard to see, but it breaks down the numbers that we just talked about, the deferrals. So they're made up of, for the county side, we deferred wardrobe audio equipment replacement. We deferred two new FTEs. We also currently have, if vacant positions arise, they are frozen and have to go before a freeze team to evaluate if they need to be filled or not. So we're trying to be clear with that. And then the 3% raise for county employees, that's for all county employees, was deferred as well. We defer the increase in dollars to the schools of $1.55 million. And we deferred the school capital and the county capital funding. That brings us to the total for the county of $8.1 million. And then the school dollars that were deferred were from state funding. The uncertainty with the ADM and what their funding would be was deferred. That's all I have.
All right, well, we'll, we'll go around the room and take questions. We'll go ahead and start with Supervisor Shepherd.
I'm not sure I have any. About the CARES Act grant program, you don't have any applications for the dining expansions in the county?
Right.
Is there some reason?
The main purpose of that grant is to provide more outdoor seating.
That's kind of what I'm saying.
So that they can have outdoor seating, seating into the cooler months. So heaters, tents, expanding leasing property that's adjacent to their current restaurants. And the reason that we don't, we think the reason we don't have it again is just because there are not a lot of restaurants that are in the unincorporated parts of the county. So the towns might have, we expect they will have one of them, we will.
Right. Did you have another?
I don't, I think it's all I have right now.
All right. Supervisor Blavens?
If you'll go back to Slide 6 real quick on your total allocations for the CARES Act.
Yeah.
So I see that you have a note down here, not the hazard pay. And if we do the hazard pay, that's about $342,000 off of that 1.3.
Right.
And then you, and have a little disclaimer here. The task force may not allocate all of theirs.
Right.
Do we have any idea of what that portion might look at? I mean, how much it might be?
The last time Michael here and I spoke about that, he's managing that budget, but we are working closely together, and I tried to catch him, but it was too late in the day. I think it will be, unless there are made through items that I'm not aware of, which that could be, I think it's around $800,000.
Does that also include, and I might have it on the chart here and I've missed it, on the vehicles, does that include the Command Mobile that we've already purchased? Does that come from, that came from our money or the task force money?
Task force.
That came from the task force. So that's already included, and we would have, they may have that left. Okay, all right. And, and then that would roll back to us, Montgomery County?
Yes, because we received the grant funds initially, and then we divided them. So that it could come back to us. We could, then if we chose to split it with the towns, we could do that, but we are not required to do that since we already had provided funding to them.
Okay, very good. And let me go on, going to Slide 7 here. So this is the same $10.3 million is what we had at your last presentation. And this is what the budget of 3.6, so we move forward with the carryover, carryforwards, things that we've talked about. So we're, have a potential of $6.7 million that are one-time use only. Just make sure I understand.
Correct.
And these are options of what they could be used for, including the one-time paid supplements.
Yes.
And that, that number does not include the CARES Act money. This is.
Right.
Okay, I want to make sure.
The CARES Act money is in this, is general.
Very good, all right, that's good. And then if you, on the, just the last slide so I can understand. The total deferred, oh, maybe I'll, let me make sure I've got that. All right, going back from our deferred for what we put on hold. But we've already approved the raises. We've just deferred them for right now, correct?
The raises haven't technically been approved because they're still in special contingencies. So they are part of the budget and they're part of the ongoing money. But you do have to take action before they.
Appropriations, right. Okay, all right.
They've not been appropriated.
They've not yet?
Yes.
Okay. And then you said some vacancy, you've had the two new full-time positions, and any possible vacancies that haven't been filled yet? That's not included in this as well?
We've not, we've not included in these numbers any savings, if you will, from freezing positions.
Oh.
That's actually in addition to whatever you see here.
Okay.
We haven't had a significant number of vacancies since we exempted them.
Okay, well, I'm thinking about the Department of Social Services. They have some vacancies.
They're exempt from the.
They, okay.
Yes, ma'am, we actually.
And our sheriff's office is exempt as well.
Okay, that's, all right, that answers that question, thank you. Okay. That's all right now. Let me, let me think about it. Thank you.
Supervisor Demonts, are you ready?
I'm ready. But I also reserve the right to have more questions later.
You will talk about.
Like now and later, and then maybe again after that.
It's going to be a night of questions, so.
What is our current availability of the $767,000 plus 3% raise? Would we be able to take action on that to get employees raises at this time?
You could take action on that. The only thing I would say is that it is ongoing. So unless, so if you gain raises and then next year or the year after that, things go really bad, we would have to figure out what to do about that because it is ongoing. But that money is there, it's in the budget as ongoing, yes.
Craig, what would we need to do to move forward on that? Is that something we could do tonight? Or is that something that we would have to do at a future meeting?
One of the, one of the things I would want to point out is when you take an action to approve a pay increase, it'll take time to work into the system. So in other words, if, if you were to approve something tonight, the earliest it could be effective would be on the November 15th checks. Is that right?
It would be the November 30th check because we would have to come back to you at an appropriation.
Yes.
And it's meeting it. If we come on the 10th for, with the appropriation, we can't process that quick enough to get it.
Understandable.
Or somebody might quit in my office. We didn't want that.
I have to ask, are you, are you referring to retroactive? Or are you saying if we go from here on?
Just how quickly would it be implemented?
How quickly could it be implemented if we were to take an action tonight? I wasn't referring to retroactive, but I think that's an interesting thing to talk about. But I was just.
Was that figured that you used, that's why I asked?
The 767, yeah. Is that a retroactive to?
It covers the whole year.
Okay.
The whole year. So if you were to move forward with implementing salary increase for employees effective, then it'll just be prorated based on the number of pay periods that are left in the year.
And just as much for us as for anybody in the audience that might be listening, who is considered a county employee? What departments? Sheriff's Department, courts, libraries? What, what departments are encompassed under the umbrella of county employees? Besides the people that are working in this building that?
Right. So all the constitutional officers, not the clerks of court that are not constitutional officers, like General District and Circuit Court. They are not county employees, so they wouldn't be covered. Social services would be included, libraries would be included.
That was fault.
Anyone you can think of that up?
To the sheriff's office, because he's a constitutional officer, treasurer, commissioner of revenue, clerk of court. Okay.
Commonwealth attorney.
Commonwealth attorney. Sorry, I knew I was forgetting one, that was terrible of me.
It does not include grant-funded positions, which there are a few grant-funded positions in the Commonwealth attorney's office that are not included.
Okay. And I know several of my colleagues have other things to bring up specific to some capital projects that we might want to give some consideration for. So I'll be interested to hear that discussion. I'm, I'm reserving my right to ask future questions because I'm not going to have that.
One thing I want to pay you a question too. If we did, if you guys chose to implement that and prorate it, as we discussed, the dollars that would be left over would end up at the end of my cash sheet at the end of June of '21. So you could use those for one-time only kinds of expenses.
Right. Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor King?
I got a lot of questions.
No.
On these, on the CARES money, just a quick question, just for my, to catch your giggles. Are we using the CARES money to fuel them and everything? Maintenance or just to buy?
Just capital. Can you, are we using CARES money for ongoing?
We're using for vehicles?
Yeah.
We're using some CARES money through the end of December. It's not a significant amount, but yes.
Yeah, all good, yeah. I, I gave the general answer instead of the specific. Yeah, the general answer is CARES money can't be used for any ongoing expenses after December 30th.
Right. But you can use it while, before December.
Yes, sir.
There you go, bless your heart. Okay, I'll give a last back on. This 5.376 for the school deferred, that is state money, right?
Yes.
That passes through us to the school, yes.
Right.
But you, but you're, but it's in deferred, it's in deferral on the county's budget because we haven't been assured that we're receiving those dollars from the state yet. It appears that we are going to, at least that seems to be the General Assembly's approach and what we're seeing, but we haven't gotten confirmation on that yet.
Also, we don't have this money right now.
It's not come from the state to us.
No, no.
Give to the schools.
We deferred it. But we don't have it.
I believe it's correct, isn't it?
That's correct. We do not have it in our hands.
How did we deferred if we don't have it?
That's why we need to defer it, because we don't have it in our hands. So we approved the whole budget and we said, okay, but we're setting this aside. You can't spend this, the whole budget's approved. But we're not appropriating this part of it to the schools because we don't have it yet.
Okay.
And while it looks like, I'm going to Mr. Krantz talk here in a second because I don't want to go too far into the school world. But while it looks like things might be okay in '21, we don't know if they do hold us harmless. In other words, if they don't penalize the ADM for the current year, that we don't know what they're going to do in '22. So in this year '22.
So we don't even know if we're going to get the map.
We don't know yet, but if.
Okay. No, that's, that's good.
Okay.
You done good.
Oh, you're going to be coming up here, Tommy, I can assure you.
And I did bring up a while back about one-time hazard pay for deputies and whoever else. Is that something we could do tonight?
That would be life and grace, you could approve it tonight.
Yeah.
And well, they could appropriate that tonight, right? Since they, yeah.
We need to come back with an appropriation of the, with the dollar figures.
Before we go any further, I need to ask our county attorney. We actually, in the work session, we have this broken down into two sections. Can we discuss all of this at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
Keep track.
Yeah, we knew we needed to go through Part A, so Part P would help make sense.
Okay, because I, I know we're throwing budget stuff in here when we're supposed to be talking about CARES Act. But that's, we need to talk about.
That is CARES money. Pretty dense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that is the 342, 327, yes.
If we know the number.
Uh huh. We could appropriate that. If you guys wanted to appropriate that hazard pay tonight, we have those numbers. It would take me just a few minutes, but we could do that.
Okay, now, it would take till into November, you say?
If you appropriated it tonight, we could put it in their November 15th paychecks.
Are we talking just about the first responders now?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, just. Yes, yeah, yeah, just for-
Just want, sorry to interrupt, Todd, I just wanted to make sure.
We can't talk about the other till we get in the other section.
Gotcha.
Even bring up our employees.
Yeah, in order to get through this, I mean, I, I, I want everybody to have a chance to ask whatever questions they want, but we're gonna have to have interaction here because there's a lot gonna be going on and we're gonna throw a lot of stuff around.
Well, and we knew, when we added this, that we, the reason we put this work session on the agenda is it's a lot of numbers. And some of it's CARES Act money, some of it's, uh, one-time money, some of it's ongoing money, so.
But the presentation was CARES Act and the fiscal year 2021 budget discussion.
That's correct.
Okay.
We wanted, we wanted to give you a feel for where we were with CARES Act money. So you would see, we do feel there is gonna be some CARES Act money left over at the end. The staff's gonna regroup again in early November to see where we are. We'll be back to you again sometime in November to give you an update again.
Okay.
So on this 10.3, I should wait till we start over? The other section?
No, you don't have to wait, you don't have to wait.
So we can-
Throw it out.
We got a lot of discussion on that.
Is that end of your questions?
I got-
I'd go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Just one more thing. On this 10.3, I'd like to bring out, if we, uh, I talked to the staff about this, the Riner Park on the Escrevaton, the blueprints and all of this on it, about 2.1 million dollars.
That's an estimate, yes, sir.
Estimate. And that would be everything but the park itself. I mean, it would grade it out and everything. And I, I would like for the, uh, the board to consider it tonight. That's all I have.
Well, I'm sure you'll have more.
Yeah.
Supervisor Binks.
Okay, on the CARES Act, um, money, are we like having, um, all the cleaning supplies and PPE and mask and everything that we need? Are we pretty confident? Because it sounds like, you know, the rates are gonna continue to go up and we might have a hard winter.
We do continue to bat the mess we can.
Okay, good, good. Okay, and then on the, um, subject of raises and pay and all, um, I, I reached out to board members either on the phone or through email to say that I'm very concerned about the school side because we've come such a long way in our county-school relationship of trying to have everything be fair and equal. And so, um, the teachers and the employees of the school system have really been asked to do a lot. Um, just like law enforcement, just like our, our fire, our rescue and our accounting place. Everyone's been asked to do a lot. And so personally, I, you know, I'm glad that we have all this information, but I feel strongly that we need to know what, what the schools are planning on. And I know they haven't gotten there yet because they're meeting this next Monday night. What are they planning on doing for their employees? Um, I can tell you that, um, I still talk to a lot of school employees and there's a lot of stress going on right now. And, um, I think that I consider them, I know they're not considered, but I consider them essential, essential workers, I mean, that's just the way it is. So, I would prefer, instead of just jumping into things, that we had more information about, you know, all the employees, what's gonna happen on the school side, you know?
Sure.
Um, are we gonna give a 3% raise to our employees and then a bonus on top of that? And then the schools don't have money to do that? Do they have money to do a bonus? I don't know, we, we, we don't have that information. And so I feel very strongly that we need to have everything represented before us before we dive into things. Because we're sort of in a, in a situation where we gotta be sort of prepared for also the next fiscal year, what might happen, what, you know, we don't know. And we still don't know what the state is going to do about sending money to the schools. So that's where I'm coming from. I'm coming from the fact that I, I personally, after seeing what everyone is going through and all my service on the different boards and all the different employees, I mean, there are challenges for everyone out there. And so I want to be as fair as I can with what we have, you know? We only have limited resources, so that's where I'm coming from.
Do you have any more questions for Angie?
No.
Okay. Um, because we're gonna, we're gonna be discussing.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Vice Chair Bone.
Um, slide number three, I have no idea what ACAC is.
That's good.
Thank you.
Ahem.
Sorry.
Alright, there'd be no fire.
Um, on slide seven, uh, under the balance after potential, balance after potential uses, uh, broadband could be under that.
Very well could, yes.
Okay. Um, reserve funds is there, but your last presentation said we had enough reserve funds.
That's true, it's just an example, it's not a suggestion, just an example.
Okay.
And the items at the top are things, the potential uses are things that have already been talked about, that's why they're segregated.
Gotcha.
Because the second part really is just a sample.
Okay. Um, and then on slide nine, uh, if we, we deferred the 3% raise, and that's the total amount from July 1.
Yes.
And since it's not July 1, uh, could we bonus people and start, bonus them back to July 1 instead of waiting until June 30th to carry forward and bonus or however you mentioned?
If you wanted to provide a bonus, you could provide a bonus to county employees who are not eligible for hazard pay under peers from that 10.3 million dollars. We already have that from last June, so you could do that with those funds right now.
But can't we do it from this?
You could do it with, with the part, yes, you could do that from that as well.
Uh-huh. Is there a preference, one over the other?
These are ongoing funds, so if you use them for a bonus, then they're kind of freed up for next year, but you don't really have a purpose for them for next year yet, so they would still be available. But they're, it, it's not a huge preference.
Okay. And then, um, deferring to new FTEs, again, it's not July 1st, so we couldn't even spend the 116,000 if we wanted to hire two people.
True.
But could we hire four on January 1?
Which I wouldn't recommend that we-
I'm just, as an example, yeah.
You could, but then you don't have money next year to pay off or you-
Thank you.
Yes.
So there is no way that we could spend the 116, because it's not July 1, right now?
Not for those two FTEs.
Yeah, okay.
If, well, if you hired two FTEs, you could, and then you'd have some dollars left over that you could spend for one-time things.
Mm-hmm. Right.
But you couldn't hire, well, I wouldn't recommend that you would hire four because the next year you would have to figure out-
Ongoing costs.
Mm-hmm. So, if we wanted to give all county employees a 3% raise plus the hazard pay and make sure that they got paid back to July 1, how would we go about doing that?
We would use the, um, entire $767,000 that's set aside in special contingencies. That number won't have changed because some employees have turned over since then and it's based on their current pay, so it won't be exactly that number. But we would use that for their raises, we could use CARES money for, for the, um, law, sworn law enforcement officials, and then the remainder of the employees could receive a bonus from the year-end funds.
Um.
We call them one-time pay.
One-time pay supplement.
Thank you.
They are not bonuses, they are one-time pay supplements.
You couldn't see his eyebrows, wouldn't you?
And, um, so I know that, uh, Mr. Krantz is coming up here shortly, but I imagine that either one or both of you have been talking to Mr. Krantz saying, this is the money that could be made available if you needed it to give your employees a 3% raise. Is that true? Did you have that conversation with him?
We haven't talked specifically about raises. What we've talked about is the fact that the county is still, still has in contingency the million 550,000 that could be released to the schools should the board decide to move forward with that. Um, also, we have had conversations with the schools and Mr. Krantz may want to reference that as well. There may be some opportunity for the county to share some of our CARES Act money with the schools to reimburse them for certain items that they could then free up money to put towards employee pay as well. So we're trying to look to see if there's any opportunities in addition to the million 550,000 that could be of benefit to the schools.
So where would the additional CARE, like how much additional CARES Act money could be, uh?
Well, we've shared the estimates with you tonight of where we think we are right now. Angie did point out that with the task, the task force appears to perhaps have some additional funds that would be available, so there are several areas that we could look at should the schools come forward with a request for assistance on the CARES money.
So at the same time, there are still some purchases that are in the works that haven't been made yet. The numbers that I have shown you as estimates are, um, funds we have actually spent or items we've ordered. So there could be some other things that are in the works that are close to getting purchased or ordered, so we'd look at that here before we go to the panel.
That's correct.
So just to be clear, the 1.55 in school operating funds was earmarked for their 3% raises.
Oh, it, no.
No? It's in their big pot of operating.
That's correct.
So they get to choose.
How to utilize it.
So the school board could say, yeah, let's use it for 3% raises, or no.
Yeah, I would, I would-
We can't tell them to-
I would assume that the schools' side, their 3% raises are a lot more than a million 550,000.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, and what is Mr. Krantz going to talk to us about?
Whatever I ask him to.
Okay.
I don't think he has-
I don't think he has a preference, I don't think he's-
Okay. That's all my questions for now.
And, and along the same lines, um, that, uh, Vice Chair was bringing up, on page six, uh, you have that estimated total to be allotted 1.357, whatever. If you were to deduct, um, the money for the, for the Sheriff's Office, that would put it right about a million dollars, so. And of course, I'm not talking about anything else that would come back from the task force, so. All right. Um, Mr. Krantz, would you be so kind as to come up here and let us pick your brain a little bit?
Thank you, Angie.
You're welcome.
Yeah, don't go too far, Angie.
Yeah, don't go away.
Can't, can't go home and eat supper yet.
I did eat before I came to shit. I would, I would like to often leave it. He might be up here a long time, he might-
Now, we've been talking about domestic abuse tonight, uh, Mr. Krantz, so you don't have to worry, you're covered. There won't be any of that. I, I think, I think one of the main things that we wanted you to be here tonight for was to kind of get a feel for what you think the state is gonna be doing for you all, so. Well, let's start there first.
Okay. Um, so it's understanding that when we see the governor's signature on the budget, that everything, including maybe the sales tax, uh, hold on to ensure that the day it budgeted originally to the school system is gonna maintain its place. The question of the 5.3 million dollars that we have from the state that really gets in doubt is the ADM component. Um, we had budgeted right at 95.5 on ADM. Uh, when we did the deferral, we lowered that to 97.55, which reduced our revenue by about 518,000. There's a, a bill that went through the House that did not go through the Senate room in a special session. It's our understanding that it will come up again in the regular session in January. Um, and, and supposedly it has a good chance of passing, but who knows between now and January? But what it would do is in FY '21, keep your ADM either at the higher of March 30th, 2020, or March 30th, 2021. What happens for us is, when we do our ADM on September 30th, that number will, if we go down, we'll see an adjustment beginning in January. If that number stays the same, our payments stay the same until March 30th. When March 30th comes, there's another adjustment that, that takes place. So, right now, today, if you look at our total enrollment, we're running about 9,500, so we're seeing about a 300 student decline, uh, from where we were a year ago. Um, so under the current rules, come March 30th, March 31st, we would see a reduction in our payments from the state at 300 students times about $6,000 per student. Okay, that's on our annual basis. What the bill says is that we'll hold you once. So we'll give you the higher of the two numbers, you won't lose any dollars. All indications from DOE is that that's gonna hold true, but, you know, that's discussions, that's opinions. Uh, we won't know anything on the ADM component until what we see happens in January or February. But the rest of this, of the numbers from the state, when we see the governor's budget, we anticipate based off of everything we've read, is that our budget from the state would be right on the line, and we won't see any difference.
That's certainly good news.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Um. So there was one other issue I was gonna bring up and it just flew out of my head. Um, but let's, the, I'm sure you all have questions. Uh, let's start with Vice Chair Bone, she had some.
Sure, so your CARES Act money, some of your CARES Act money goes to 2022 as opposed to for the county, it's only through the end of the year, is that true? And can you tell us what kind of money that is?
So we basically have in school system four CARES funds. We have one with CARES, which is called CARES ESSO, and that particular fund is about 1.5 million dollars. We have shared that with private schools, so we've got about 1.49, 1.48 million dollars. Those funds we can hold until 20, till November 2022. Then we have what's called CARES GEAR. And GEAR was money that the state had that they decided to give back to K-12 through a grant process. And that one we reward about $300,000. That also goes to November 2022. Those are in six buckets, for example, special education, instruction, technology, PPEs, and they're in smaller dollars, you know, you're generally talking somewhere between 25 to about 35,000. Then we have, we call, we call the state CRO. So the state through DOE came back and said, okay, we have all these funds, just as y'all have. They have to be spent by December 30th, we can't spend those. So we're gonna do an allocation to schools, the total is 220 million. Our share of that is 1.73 million dollars. And then we had conversations with the county on possibly, maybe to the extent that y'all have funds available, using some of that in CRO. Today, the school system has either spent, is awaiting for, or is getting ready to order on or before, within the next week, 3.8 mil, 3.805 million dollars. Now, our expenditures have been spent, just as y'all saw in your schedule, PPEs, disinfectants, midday bus drives. You know, we're allowed that if it's not a budgeted expenditure, some of bus drivers are out of super budget. Most of my bus drivers, out of 100 bus drivers, 97 of them have worked four and a quarter hours, that's our contractor. Today, they're working nine hours, some up to 10 hours because of the midday runs. Significant impact on it during the summer. So when March 16th came, until May 31st, bus drivers were part of our budget. DOE's interpretation of, of the rule says, since they were in your budget, you can't claim them. You didn't have an additional expense. However, when the summer came, I ran 16 buses, three days a week delivering food to all the families here in Montgomery County. That's an allowable increment of our expense, plus the aides that we put on the buses. So it wasn't just the driver, it was another individual to help with the distribution of food. To address technology inside of communities, we've done modifies. Now we've just done a transaction with T-Mobile. So we went from 300 modifies plus the T-Mobils, we have 750 internet-related devices so that families that don't have that connection and can't have struggles with doing mobile learning now have resources to try to be successful with what they're doing. We saw it through the teaching our students. Teachers were sitting inside of a classroom and I'm having students plus doing remote. Well, they were relying on a Chromebook. And using the Chromebook to manage the students that were at home on remote. Well, that became a challenge. What we did is we took large monitors and that became the monitors that are being used for the remote portion. So we did surveys, we got counts from our teachers, and we put those monitors in. So we did surveys, we got counts from our teachers, and we put those monitors in. And we've done the connections to make it a more connectivity to the two monitors they have with their existing computer system inside the classrooms. So that's been where you've seen the bulk of our dollars have been spent. We've done a few things with subscriptions where you can prepay, which we normally would have prepaid, that allowed us on our kindergarten through threes to do remote learning. So that was about thirty thousand dollars. And when you get into it, our expenditures have been very similar here, the disinfectants. We went ahead and, you know, one of the challenges we have is we're going back to school, is being able to do disinfecting of classrooms in between that five-minute period between the first and second bell period. We went out and bought backpacks. Backpacks, our custodians are hired and are supposed to, for the job description, they'll handle twenty-five pounds. The backpack fully loaded is twenty-six pounds. But I can go in and spray it down the room very quickly, and the intent is to spray it down the top of the desk. It's not a perfect system, but it gets us as much coverage as we possibly can during the times that we're doing the things that we did. So that hopefully answers what we're doing. We've got talk to the county. We're about one point eight oh two million dollars that we would ask for the county to, if they have the funds, to use for our CRF. We've got one point seven three three million on the state CRF. Our allocation's one point seven three, so we're fine. And then one, our ESSR funds were two hundred and seventy thousand, but we still have the rest of this school year plus. Our biggest thing left to do is dividers. As we look to bringing our students back here sometime very soon, we hope, I don't know that magical day, but, you know, I'll have to have some dividers in our classrooms. Right now, we, we have our six-foot social distancing, but if we bring more students back, we'll have to do some dividers. So we're working with a number of companies, and we hope to finalize that acquisition by the end of this week. Bleat Town monitor is two weeks to four weeks. The desk type dividers are two weeks. As we go through kidney tables and things like that, we'll get to four weeks.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, if you got one point eight million dollars from the county, you, the school board could approve a three percent raise if they chose to do so?
The raise itself is three point four million dollars. So what we looked at is on the CARES Act, the money that was spent in twenty, when I get reimbursed, that comes back as new money. The money that's been spent in twenty-one really could not, because we've gone out, or we've done our purchase orders and used our existing twenty-one money. In the FY twenty, it's one point three five million dollars, okay? Which when we receive that, we have to do supplemental appropriation with board supervisors. But when that comes back, it comes to the school system as new revenue. That allows us and the superintendent and the school board to use that in any way, shape, form. We have discussed, we have not yet presented to our school board a recommendation. I'll do that Monday night on the second, but that's one possibility where those funds could be spent. And then we obviously have some hazard paid on, that we would qualify for some of our employees, that if we do a stipend of some kind, we could use CARES Act funds to cover for those.
So, I hate using this phrase, shell game, but this CARES Act money and what it can buy, which creates revenue later, or, you know, not an expense, so that operating funds could be used for a raise. Anyway, you're asking the county, you're not formally asking the county for one point eight million eight oh two million dollars. But if you were, you could recommend to the school board that the teachers get a three percent raise?
I don't have funds to do that. I mean, the only way I can do it, get into the raise situation, is off of the revenue to five point three million. If I take the revenues that's been deferred to six point nine million and use the board supervisors to release that deferment, then I'd have the dollars necessary to look at the raise. On the CARES Act, the only money that could be used in a general purpose method would be the one point three five million that was paid, incurred in FY twenty, which I'm now being reimbursed on FY twenty-one. That's the only fund that would be available for that.
So that's a total different question, the total different point is that we've deferred money for raises.
Correct.
Am I saying that correctly?
If you look at our budget, we have three things that we're going to cover, the increase in, in the revenue between both the county and the state and the school system. One is the raise, three point four million, seven hundred thousand dollars for ten PPEs that we would not do going forward. And then we had an increase on VRS, which is about seven hundred thousand as well.
And so you said that you would be short, I thought I wrote down the number, oh, five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars about ADMs if your ADMs went down?
I, I'm projecting in our ADMs based off of what happened after our school board adopted the budget, after use of board supervisors adopted it, but prior to that deferment, we saw a decrease in our ADM on March thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. So based on that, I would keep it a little lower.
Okay.
ADM, five hundred and eighteen thousand.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, if you asked for one point eight million dollars from the county of CARES Act money, that has nothing to do with raises?
That's correct.
If, if you requested to, for us to release, five, I think it was five million dollars, but I could be wrong, whatever, we put, you, we put.
One point five five.
One point five five.
Well, I mean, if you did the stat, it's six point four minute approximately, six point three, six point four.
Which we don't have yet, but we could.
I expect as soon as the governor does, then, then we do have our funding.
Okay. But you said that we might be a little short potentially because of ADM or because of...
It depends on what the ADM does on March thirtieth. But if you look at our ADM, if you look at where the numbers have been, and it's, it's a fluid situation, but where our numbers have dropped is in K one and two, which kind of tells me that those are the, the children at those ages, that it's difficult to leave at home. And I think there's a strong indication when you look at four through twelve, and our numbers are actually pretty positive, that if we were to change the timing that students are inside the building, we may see an increase in that case of two and be back closer to where our ADM numbers are projected to be.
So technically, the, the state budget's approved, we could release the money, and you could recommend a three percent raise?
True.
Okay.
Now, if we did not get, let's make sure that, if we do not get anything from the county on the CRF, we would have to look hard whether we could do anything from an FY twenty reimbursement standpoint. Because I still have a lot of, you know, ensuring that we can get kids in school every day and maintain it, it would make a, it would make a tight one.
Gotcha.
Okay, let's, yeah. Supervisor Biggs.
I've already said everything I need to say. I really want to, you know, like, put this all together and, you know, so we have everything in front of us before we do anything.
Supervisor Shepherd.
You said if you, you thought we were on a more normal schedule, that your ADM would come up because of those younger students?
Yes, sir.
Do you think they would come up if, if you went to a more regular schedule, like two days a week and two days a week as opposed to splitting the day?
I mean, it's one of the things I've heard from parents, but you know, I'm one person who's had to do a survey of everybody, but that is one thing that I've heard. I think that as the administration looks for the future, that's something they'll consider, usually, as a sponsor does.
Well, on a side note, I'm not a mathematician, but it doesn't take a genius to see that if you put, even if you had two groups and you did one group going two days, full day, and the other group two full days, they would get more classroom time, more education time on those two days than they're getting now, where they're just traveling up and down the road all day. And another thing I wanted to say on that note was, a lot of your bus drivers are older and retired, and they've gone from working that four and a quarter hours a day to eight and nine hours in a bus that doesn't ride or drive like a Lexus, and it's beating them to death. That's just what I'm going to tell you.
And I do appreciate everything that you drop, but my school nutrition staff has been just as much.
I totally understand, but.
I mean, if they were fifteen, that.
I used to drive a dump truck, eight hours, ten hours a day, and I had forgot what that felt like. I remember. But I was twenty-five years old then.
Right.
It's a lot different.
It's totally different.
That's all. Supervisor Demonts.
I have a lot. A lot of clarity and clarification needed. So let's start with the five point three seven, hold on.
Five point three seven five six hundred.
Five point three seven five six hundred. Okay, so.
I'm just getting going, ma'am. I know, but I'm, I'm trying to get a feel for this. Are you?
No, no. I, I will be concise. And then we can take a break when I'm done, because I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready, I'm here.
We'll take a break after you.
Yeah. I'm vibing this. Okay. So the five point three seven five six. All right, I've heard, so that's what we have deferred right now. So I've heard three figures being lumped into, these are the deferred expenses, three point four million for employee raises, seven hundred thousand for ten full-time employees, seven hundred thousand for VRS. That is four point eight million dollars. Where is the additional money?
I mean, that was what the expense, the new expenses were. You had other just normal increases that took place, but that was a deferment amount.
Okay, so, but the amount specified as the deferment doesn't equal the numbers that you've given us for what was deferred with those expenses?
That we presented to the school system, we showed that it was a shortfall. That shortfall would be covered from year-end funds, in which it ended up being year-end funds, we're not to cover all of it, is if we had anything going in FY twenty-one.
Okay. Um, hold on, I do have several. So three point, the three percent raise is three point four million dollars, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so you did say that there are CARES Acts, CARES Act funds available or eligible, let's not say available, let's say eligible expenses for one-time pay supplements for certain MCPS employees.
Correct.
Which employees and how many? Like what category and how many?
There's two hundred and seventy-two employees. They follow within our custodial, bus drivers, and our, so I just have to go right there, school nutrition thing.
So those all would be funds, say we had unlimited CARES Act funds, and you could give them all a bonus, or a one-time.
Yeah, stipend.
Stipend of some sort supplement, then custodians, bus drivers, and school nutrition would be eligible under CARES.
Yes, sir.
Under the current regulations, okay. Are there any cost savings? And I, I recognize that this is a very difficult question to answer. Are there any cost savings related to not having the schools operating at full capacity five days a week? Are there any savings being realized in terms of utilities or anything?
Not really. I mean, the only utilities that we've seen any savings is somewhat on our water side, but right now, what's all setting that on the mechanical side, we're running full board with bringing fresh air in and bringing fresh air out. Normally, we run a pretty tight energy management system that throughout the years saves a significant amount of dollars. Right now, we're on the exact opposite and running full.
Will you stay for the rest of the work session, even if we take a break?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. That's all I have immediately. See, I told you it'd be concise, I didn't take too long.
You did, and you were true to your word. I thank you. Yeah, we're going to go ahead and take us a ten-minute break, so it's what?
Nine, ten.
Nine, ten, so at nine twenty, we'll come back. 9:10, so at 9:20, we'll come back. Say what?
Water bottle?
Get back. One minute late, that's not bad.
We did good.
Yeah, we did.
I thought you said 10 o'clock.
And we, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll go ahead and start with Supervisor King.
Hold on, take.
Okay.
Questions for him?
No, no questions, thank you, sir.
There you go, moving on. Supervisor Levin.
Okay, let me try to make sure I've got my numbers straight here, and I apologize because I know this is, but for clarity for me too. All right, so the 5.3 million that we're waiting on from the state, if we get that, um, that will go towards operations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And for you to do the raises, it's 3.4 million dollars for all your employee raises and send 700,000 for VR- VRS. Is that, do I have that correct? Okay, and so let me make sure I'm understanding, the money from the state operating could be used, are there, what are the other expenses other than the pay raises?
That would primarily, I mean, you'd have VRS, which is mainly, that's not a choice.
Right.
Um, and then you'd have the pay increase. That would be your two main uses, I don't see any other line items right now, um, that we can see any increases in.
Okay, so if you do get the projected, of course, we don't, no guarantees till we have it.
Mm-hmm.
If you did have the 5.3, out of that, it would cover the raises and VRS, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and?
But we would have to, um, you know, as you're looking into it, the concern that I have from a school style is the AEM. Um, if we don't do a whole harmless, okay, and I won't know that until January or February, then without, it's on March 3rd. If they go with the 9,500, then I see those dollars gone immediately.
And that would be, right now, if they do it, you're saying 300 less?
300,000 times 6, $6,000 per child, which is 4.8 million dollars.
Okay, all right.
And then, what's the impact in FY22? But it's not even that, if you looked in 2008, the biggest drop that took place in this community was in 2010. So am I looking at what's going on economically? You know, is it 2021 there? Probably not. Is it 2022? Probably not. I mean, a lot of very important people are saying, you know, and it's all over the place, I'm not gonna, you know, try to profess it, but um, I think it's, it's time to be more conservative than too aggressive.
And so the issue is if that, if we are short the 1.8 million dollars and you've already given the raises, that has to go follow up and be for the next year to count again?
If I lose that 1.8, I'm probably looking at a lower AEM when I start in FY22.
Okay, and even if we deferred the 1.5, 5 million, the 1.5 million, correct? And even if we talked about having some of the CARES, our county CARES money, which right now, we have about a million that we haven't spent and maybe from the New River Task Force, maybe up to 800,000 from there. Would that put your figures out to where you need?
But that's, those would be dollars that under
One time.
the CARES Act rules, I can only use for non-budgeted items. So PPEs, which are gonna continue for the district. I mean, just the dividers alone, we're looking at a bigger dollar.
I think that answers my question. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I, I'm thinking, I'm listening to this, and I think we've said it every which way we can, but, uh, there's not gonna be money for pay raises. And since you can't take our CARES money that we would give you, you can't use it someplace else to free up monies to even issue a, and I, and I, I know none of this has been discussed with your board or anything, but, uh, you wouldn't, you wouldn't even be able to do a one-time pay supplement for your employees?
Then, let me correct you if I could, please, sorry, I knew me and you confused. I think when you look at our budget, let's take the operating budget first. Add that 5.3 million dollars that got deferred, 500 of it was AEM, I'd take that off the top. The rest of it, I think, when we see the governor sign the budget here any day now, that we'll get all those funds. So to the extent that we got those funds in the million five, the district would have funds that it could consider a pay increase. Okay? Now, the unknown is would happen with 22 and 23, but you have funds that you could consider. If those funds aren't available, then you can't even have a conversation because there's no dollars for it. Now, when we look at the stipend, the CARES Act, the district has given POs out almost, if we haven't done all of the, the dividers, of about 3.8 million dollars. Of that 3.8, 1.35 of it was, was FY20. Spent FY20, used FY20 money, and came about because we froze those. We froze all of our expenses on March 6th. Every single penny that gets spent in the district, I had to personally approve from the 16th through June 10th. Every penny, there was no threshold. And if you didn't have a valid reason why they would be used, that right then and there for education, we didn't spend it. So we accumulated cash. And now, we use those dollars, we use those line items to pay for the 1.35 million that we did for PPEs. Then the difference from that 1.35 to the 3.8, I've used in FY21. And I've used my budget in FY21. So, uh, the one, you know, the difference is sitting against FY21 budget. Well, at some point in FY21, things may change, and if we start bringing students back and if we get back to normal operations, I may not have dollars in my budget for basic utilities, basic supplies, just basic operations. Yeah, we typically run a carryover in the million to $2 million range, but you can see how it gets extremely tight if I don't have those funds back. Well, I only can get those funds back if I can use CARES Act, uh, ESSA, or using from the county CR, CRF. Now, the FY20 money, which is 1.35, those dollars are new revenue. They could be used for the stipend. And I think the intent of the administration, so to go into our school board, is to consider, just like the county's considering, a stipend and taking credit. Um, now whether that's the will of the superintendent and the school board, I can't, you know, I don't know that. We'll make a presentation Monday night at the second.
Okay. Um, I'm sure there's gonna be some follow-up questions. If you will just raise your hand and I'll acknowledge you, I'm not gonna go back around the room. If nobody has a question. Vice Chair Ball?
So this might be for Angie also. Yeah, um, I don't know if you have gone back to 2008, 9, 10, but from what I can recall, I believe state funding did go down in those years. So, do you know how significant? Like 20% or?
It was significant, but I mean, I don't have the exact figures off the top of my head.
I don't have the exact amount either, but FY10 was the most pressed as well. So it would be not 22 to 23 if the trend evolves.
Uh-huh. So if state funding goes down in 22, fiscal year 22, we wouldn't be able to carry on the raises, technically. Is that true?
No, I mean, if you look at, so let's take, um, our some rough numbers.
Uh-huh.
Okay, the budget that got approved on just the general purpose of it, 121.8 million dollars roughly. All right? If we back out 500,000, we're sitting at 121.3 million dollars. If you look at the expenses that was there, you end up having, if I spend everything that's in the budget, less everything on the expense side which we're missing, your revenues exceed your expenses to death. Then depending on what the carryover is, which this district has historically had carryover. So I think, I think as long as we're prudent in having spent our dollars throughout the remainder of the year, which we need to be, then I believe that financially, we wouldn't be, and I'm not gonna tell you it's a home run, but I think we would be in a very solid position that, um, we would be able to battle some of the challenges that could come up in 22. Now, 23, that's another story, I haven't gone out that far yet to tell you if we could really do it, but and part of that is I just don't know, you know, the state has to give me more information on what their assumptions are gonna be, because that'll drop, you know, most of our budget.
Um, I think there were several years that employees did, uh, school employees did not get any raises. There were several years that you actually laid, didn't lay off, but let people attrition
Right.
through and not backfill. Is that, and those are the types of things that you would move forward, you could possibly u- use in the future if you had to, right?
Correct.
Not that we want to, because the ratio between teachers and students isn't exactly right where it needs to be at this point in time.
Right.
Even. Um, what other things can you tweak during tough times to tide over?
You do more of your facility work in-house, don't use third parties. You really start to question, um, is it something that's nice to have versus it's something I have to have? Is there things I can do, for example, in school nutrition, where instead of preparing food in every single kitchen, maybe centralize it in more, you know, fewer kitchens, thus reducing the amount of new equipment and or repairs I need to make? So those are the type of things you start, you look at your bus rides. Um, I mean, when you look at it, for me to operate a bus, including a driver, is about $3.50 per month. So, you know, and I'm driving a little 5 million miles a year. So anytime I can start shaving on, on that side, just by being a little smarter than the way we do our routes, or watching the midday trips, or watching the athletic events, watching the field trips. I mean, there's lots of things, you, you know, you get down to, it's great to have, but do I have to have it?
Last question is, does any, how many students don't have suitable Wi-Fi at this time?
I think right now, based off of the amount of MiFi's we've gone through, plus what we give to T-Mobile, IT believes that's somewhere in the, you know, 600 to 700 range. Because I'll have over 750 units.
How many students don't have that connection?
That would be, that's all for students. Those were all devices used for school.
I thought we were only short 200 students needed better, needed connection.
It was 300 with the MiFi's. We went through every MiFi and then we've gone through on top of that.
Uh-huh. But there's still some students that don't have connection.
That's why we did the contract with T-Mobile, and they'll be getting devices.
And so all students should have connection?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Follow-up?
I have a follow-up question for Angie, just to clarify. For the hazard pay for eligible employees, the 342,000, how much is that per employee?
It's 2,500.
2,500?
$2,500 per full-time employee, and 1,250 per part-time.
That's just for, just deputies.
Yeah.
Follow-up for Mr. Krantz? Thank you, sir.
That wasn't too bad.
No, it wasn't bad at all.
Thank you.
I've got on my screen here an email that, that we all received from our, uh, our very own Craig Meadows, which was, I don't know if you all need to refer to, is back on October the 8th, but Craig, if you wanna?
Sorry?
I'm not pulling it up, and I've been trying.
October the 8th.
Yeah. Doesn't load.
If you wanna kinda give us a rundown on that, I'm not asking you to go through every one of those scenarios and costs, but they'll start at this number and they end at this other number that you have sent, um, along with, um, the cost of the 3% pay raise and also the, uh, the sheriff's office.
I do not have that in front of me, however, Angie has a wonderful spreadsheet. I can give you a summary of what it included. Um, it included the, uh, there'd been discussion about hazard pay for our sworn law enforcement, and that's where all this discussion first started. And the number that seemed to be And the number that seemed to be, uh, the consensus among the group was $2,500 for full-time sworn law enforcement and the emergency services coordinator position, and $1,250 for part-time sworn, uh, employees. And the total for that one was 342,000 some odd dollars, I believe.
327.
327, thank you. Uh, then, there was discussion about various amounts for one-time pay supplements for county employees. Uh, there was discussion about, well, what would the cost be if we used the same amount, 2,500 for full-time, 1,250 for part-time? Um, and we ran the numbers on that, but then there was discussion about, well, okay, if we didn't do the full amount, what if we looked at various examples? So I believe in that email, I went through in $250 increments for full-time, starting at $750 for full-time employees, all the way up to the 2,500.
Now, you started at 1,000.
Started at 1,000.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, and again, the funds for that, should the board decide to move forward with any one-time pay supplement for full-time county employees, part-time county employees, that are not receiving any proceeds from the hazard pay, those funds would come from one-time monies that were available at the end of fiscal year '20, the 10.3 million that Angie referred to earlier. Um, then the third question that was posed, I believe, was what would the cost be if the county were to move forward with implementing a 3% pay increase? And I believe the calculation we used was November 1st to be included in the November 15th pay, and that number was about 511,000, 466, okay? There were now, and the numbers stick, I don't know why, but, um, and that would be from a portion of the 767, 199 that's currently deferred. So, we're talking about three different pots of money. CARES Act money for, in essence, what we've called hazard pay for sworn law enforcement. A, a one-time pay supplement for other county employees that would come from year-end funding. And then the third piece, should the board want to move forward with a percent increase for pay, would come from the money that's deferred.
And I, I believe, I think I've spoken to most everybody, but I, you all tell me if I'm wrong on this one, maybe we can start eliminating some of these and start discussing others. Um, when it comes to the, um, the sworn officers for the sheriff's office, I think everybody is in agreement on the $2,500 figure coming from the CARES money. Is there anybody that has a different suggestion for that?
Just one question, that 1,250 for the?
Part-time?
Part-time, the sheriff's department?
Yes, sir.
That would come out of the CARES money, too?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is correct.
Yeah, all sworn. All right, so let's not, we don't need to really beat that one to death anymore, but...
When, when do we actually make a motion to do that?
Well, you can, you're in a work session right now, so you would just need consensus if you want to move forward with that.
And I think we do have consensus.
Consensus.
So, we do have it, so, uh, would that be added to new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, the next item up is the, which I think we do have some, um, different ideas on, is the 3% pay raise for county employees. There's, I've heard two, two suggestions. One, that we implement it on November the 1st, and the other one is that we retroactive it back to July 1st.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, let's, let's discuss that.
Um, I like the way that Mr. Meadows just explained it, how the one-time, uh, 2,500 and 1,250, uh, for county employees could be taken out of the carryover from, uh, fiscal year 2020, that ended in, uh, June this year, and then, starting November 1, using what's already budgeted, 511 and 4, 466 dollars would be 3% from November 1 forward. So, instead of going back to July 1, I think the bone, the, um, 2,500 and the 1,250 would kind of cover that.
It actually, I think for the average county employee would way cover it. It would be like three times probably what they would normally get.
So, um, I personally am okay with doing it that way. You know, gosh forbid, we get to Ju-, into June or May, and we're like, you know, we do have, you know, another 160,000 or whatever the difference is between what's in our budget and 511. Um, we could give a one-time bonus at that time with that money, right? If we really wanted to, which would, you know, be in essence of going back to July 1, if that's what we so chose.
If, if this would help to speed things up, how many of you would be in favor of instituting the 3% November 1st? Three. Four against.
So, can I tell you why I didn't give you a thumbs up on that? Um, when we deferred it, I was very clear in that being my number one priority to bring back, and I can't remember exactly what I said at that time, um, but it was my intent that it be with the start of the fiscal year, which would be July 1. Um, and, and I don't know if I said it at the time that we chose to defer it or not, but I feel like I made that commitment to our employees, that, that their raises effective July 1 were a main priority of mine when we were having another discussion about the budget and taking that money out of deferment. So, I completely understand what you're saying, um, and am not going to make a huge issue or a big sting out of it if the majority of this board wants to date it from November 1st. I think our employees would be very, very appreciative that we have put their raises back. However, um, I do want to at least counterpoint that my personal priority, uh, when we deferred it, was to make it retroactive when we brought it back.
Supervisor Shep?
And that's what I understood, too. Um, and I'm not sure, I'm, I don't understand all the numbers, how it would work if we don't go back, so there's that, but, um, I mean, I'm not against the raise, I just, I, I'd like to see us go back, I think.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, is there a reason, since we're having a work session, was this supposed to be voted on tonight? Is there a reason that we're thinking about voting on? I mean, I guess I...
I, I think the reason is, the obvious reason, is that we want to put money into the hands of our employees.
Then what do we do about the schools then?
Um, I think we just heard that there's really not a whole lot we are going to be able to do with schools.
So, there's no commitment on our part to do anything, or?
What the schools are looking for are $1.8 million, of which would be available for us to do.
It seems, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tommy, but there seems to be a lot of, um, not, th- there's no, um, confidence in that this will happen, that, and if something doesn't happen, like, w- you have spoken about, then you can't make all the plans that you've made, so.
Come on.
I, I do feel like, with the high degree of confidence the state's best, like, that that budget's going to include the majority of...
Oh, yeah, you need to come up to the microphone.
Yeah. Josh was having...
Just for the record. Just to put you on the record.
I apologize. I, I have a high degree of confidence the state's budget is going to have the five-plus million dollars in, for the school system. Um, I have a high degree of confidence that the county's 1.5 million will come over, so I think the school system of the 6.9 million that was deferred in the revenue side will pick up about 6.4 million dollars. Okay? I think that's, that's, that's pretty certain. Um, I know that there's 1.5 million dollars of CARES, yes, sir, I'd love to get, you know, some of the county on the CRF, that I can reimburse the FY21, 20 numbers of 1.35 million. I know that that 1.35 million could be used for a stipend, so I think that Monday night you will hear, and I just can't share it publicly tonight, because I haven't had that opportunity, um, to, to have the presentation to our school board, but I think you'll see that, just like you're having this discussion tonight, they'll have the same discussion on Monday night.
And I think that is a fair answer, Supervisor Biggs, that they have to look at what they want to do with whatever they get, and I think we have to respect that.
Well, ultimately, the decision is the school board's, and I totally get the point, for sure, but it's hard to hold money hostage on our side, waiting for a decision that we have no control over.
If I might, I think, you know, if you would wait one week, that you'd see what the board would do Monday. We, our board meets Monday night because of the elections on Tuesday, and I believe you'll see that, you know, we've worked close with the House administration, trying to keep everything as close as possible for everybody, because we are one family, and I know we're all separately owned entities, but at the end of the day, we're still all one family. That, I think you'd see something that may not be exact, but could be real close to each other.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You may want to take a seat up front.
Um, Chair...
I won't do it.
Chair Fitzpatrick, um, I think if you took a, I'm not sure if you call it a survey of how many people would be okay with bringing that 3% raise back to July 1, we might have more votes, yes, instead of November 1st.
Right, but I, I think we've actually switched our conversation now from not when to institute the raise, but whether we should do it tonight or not, so, um... And you know, when I did the consensus, there was only three in favor, so I'm assuming that there's four in favor, which would be the consensus, of implementing it back to July 1, so.
So, ask the question, uh, you could ask the question, how many people are in favor of taking some action today?
Yeah, what she said. You can't vote 10 times. So, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I didn't see, oh, you, no, can I catch you? So it'd be, yeah, consensus to take action today.
I feel comfortable, based on Mr. Krantz's, as well as Ms. Hills and, uh, Mr. Meadows', you know, explanation, that the school board technically could approve. Whether or not they choose to is their prerogative, but at least the money's there to be able to do it.
I would agree.
That's why I feel okay about voting today.
Likewise.
I agree with that statement.
All right, so, um, Supervisor King, we didn't hear from you. Were you in favor of, uh, doing the 3% retroactive to July 1st?
Yeah.
How would that be handled, Craig?
It will be if, it would be retroactive to July 1st, and it would either be in the November 15th or November 30th paycheck.
As a lump sum catch-up?
Yes, sir. That's the way we would handle that.
All right.
I'd almost recommend that, um, that we hold off on the bonus, or the 2,500. We can hold off on that to a later meeting, and maybe that, maybe whatever the school board decides may affect that.
Well, um, discussion on that?
I think we need to move forward with it, because as it is now, end of November would be when they get it, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Any, any action you take tonight would be, Angie, I'm looking at you, November 30th paycheck?
It would be November 30th paycheck.
Yes.
We could make it retroactive to whatever day.
Right, right. But that would include the one-time pay supplement, it would, would be in the November 30th paycheck.
Yes, yeah, it would be, because we don't have, we'll meet in December. I'd like to move forward with it.
I agree with, uh, Mr. King, because if you look at, uh, Mr. Meadows' email, there's a lot of counties around that's already done it.
Yeah.
Already. So we're, we're, we're late okay, already.
But, okay, so if we're, if we, if the, if the suggestion is to go ahead and do retroactive to July 1st, then, um...
That's the 3%.
Right. That's not what the other counties have done. The other counties have not given a 3% raise, from what the notes.
That's true.
They've given that one-time supplement, but they haven't given the raises.
And I think, um, I had, I don't know if it was you that had told me this, that our 3% raise, even though our, our, our towns are not able to do that, or we haven't heard that they're, um, planning on doing that, um, does this put our employees on a more even pay scale with the town employees?
It does. When we did the compa-class study a few years ago, if you remember, we only were able to fund 70% of what the new recommendations were in the comping class study. In the last two years, when we've done pay adjustments, we've held the range steady, trying to get folks caught up, so when you do comparable comparisons to the other towns' compensation plans, it helps bring us more in line with the two towns.
Well, I think that's enough reason for me to want to do it, to, uh, just bring it back in line.
Well, and just to, to provide clarity, you said that the other places hadn't give right, given raises, but we weren't given information on whether or not they've been given raises, so we don't know whether or not other counties have awarded raises. The information, it says a summary of my discussions, da-da-da-da-da, and several of you also asked what our neighboring jurisdictions are doing with regard to pay supplements. It doesn't say anything in the information about pay raises. That information was not solicited, so we don't have it. We don't know whether or not they've given pay raises.
That is correct. Thank you, Sherri, I appreciate you forwarding that email, because I had some of the numbers, but what I basically did is reached out to the Roanoke Valley managers and the newer Valley managers, and said, what are you folks looking at doing in terms of compensating your employees this year?
So, with that in mind?
Yeah.
That's what they were planning on doing for compensation, and an increase or a raise was not part of that proposal?
We didn't ask whether or not a raise was part of it.
I, I hear what Supervisor Vaughn's saying. I can't say with certainty that all of them answered the question the same way. Some of it, some of them may have had some salary increases in there. They were primarily, and this has been a, this has been quite a topic among the, the managers groups as well, because everybody tries to look at each other to see what they're doing. Um, I can't speak to if each of these had any increases in their pay.
All right, well, let me just go ahead and ask this question then. How many would be in agreement to add a 3% pay raise for county employees, retroactive back to July 1st in our, uh, new business tonight? Okay.
What about one-time payment?
Now, we have to talk about that. So, suggestions on that?
Can we ask?
The one-time pay supplement.
Can we ask the question first? And I don't, I don't know if this is appropriate, so I'll throw this to you and let you make the decision.
Yes.
Um, because we have two decisions. The hazard pay that's eligible under the CARES Act, the 342, for our sheriff's office employees, and then 801, I think, is what we're talking about for county employees. So, do we want to take those apart and have that be two different decisions, or do we want that to be one decision together?
I think it probably has to be two decisions.
Uh, I defer to our county attorney.
I mean, you can appropriate a vote, right?
Yeah, it, it's not, well, they're coming from separate pots, so I...
I just mean, like, when you're, when you're doing your thumbs up, thumbs down poll, are we wanting to ask those two questions together or separately?
I, I would think separately.
Separately.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I would.
And then we would.
It would help clarify it if it's separate. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so discussion on one-time pay supplement for county employees.
Wait, have I sent you an email? I would like to see us be even across the board at $2,500.
Supervisor Blevins?
Well, I was looking at trying to be fair too, um, but I'm looking at what the CARES Act funds and what that would be, 342, and then I was trying to be fair if we spent close to that for the employees um for their one-time supplement. And my reasoning for that is just trying to be fair, even though I know that that comes out being a little bit less than our first responders. But then I think about, and, and again, our central workers, um, I think about our first responders having to do their duty and they're being more exposed to possible the hazard, and that's why it was called hazard pay, than um, maybe not necessarily that all of our employees, um, lots of employees were given the benefit, are um able to work from home. The government center was closed at some time so that the, I know, you know, where they're protected. So I was trying to look at budget-wise, what would be fair too, even though I know it doesn't equal out to the same amount. If you, if we kind of compare it to the CARES Act money of 3,400, 342,000, and then you gave us several um 400,000, and that would be 1,250 full-time employees of one-time supplement, part-time employees, 625. I was trying to get it very similar, to be fair. Is that how you all were looking at it fair, or just actually individual dollar amounts?
Well, I, I think that's a, that's a good place to start, but if we look on page 3, um, Angie, we have a, very top of the page, it says COVID leave and eligible personnel, $600,000. Is that a benefit that went to our employees?
Everybody.
That's the, that's the pay that people got when we were closed, or if they, for the emergency paid sick leave. You guys approved that they can have up to 12 weeks of full pay. The federal law didn't require that we pay them their full salary, so they can receive that pay if they have a COVID-related date, which includes childcare for children that are not in school.
Okay, so yes.
So yes.
That, that was for all employees, right?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff's Department, everybody.
Any county employee on the county pay plan.
It also includes the PSA.
Social Security and all that.
PSA as well.
Social Service.
All benefits, yes, Social Services. Part of theirs ran through the state, but the part of the state didn't pick up a different way, we covered that.
All right, is there any other benefits that our employees received during this time through uh CARES? None? Okay. Thoughts?
I agree with Supervisor King. I do understand the point that Supervisor Blevins is making, um, but I I view it on a per person instead of an overall total basis, um, and that's why I agree with Todd.
Supervisor Shepherd?
So what do you, what do you, what's your proposal? I mean, I, I hear you say it, but I can't understand it.
I'm just saying, give everybody $2,500 across the board. Full-time, full-time employees, the same as we did the Sheriff's Department.
I do see Mr. Blevins' point, um, that Sheriff's Department, the, the hazard pay is for, you know, just that. And I know our employees are very loyal and, and all that, but like she said, some of them didn't, weren't able to stay home. I mean, I I could go either way, really. I don't know.
Maybe something different.
We'll come back, we'll circle back around to you.
Well, what I was actually thinking when she was talking was maybe not drop so much, but go to like 2,000 for the employees, and then 2,500 for Sheriff's Department.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I want to do as much as we, you know, can for our county employees. I feel okay about that, but I still have that commitment to making things fair for the school employees. So I'm still thinking, but if you want to go ahead with the discussion about the 25 and the, I, I have a feeling that on the school side, that probably people are not going to get a supplement of $2,500. I don't see that happening.
You got a number in your head that you want to throw out there?
I would say it'd be way less because they have more employees, so. You know.
Okay.
I mean, I'm caught, I'm caught in a role hunt, because I've been on this board for so long, and I've always supported county employees from the very get-go. And the county employees know I support them and all the work they do, but I also want to make it fair for school employees because I know what they're going through. So, I mean, I've just tried to, to sort of present that tonight, and I, and, and Tommy has been a big help. Um, I'm still really torn because to vote on this tonight, when we didn't have it on the agenda, I understand why everybody wants to vote on it, and we seem to not be wanting to wait until we see what happens next Monday. So if we have to go ahead and vote on it tonight, and you're asking about the 2,500 and the, and the 1,250, oh, of course you want to do it as much as you can. You know, and I get it, and I get what Sherry's saying too, because we're not, we're, we're not making a difference between first responders and regular county employees if we do that. So.
Yeah, and I think i- if we were to try to divvy up county employees into the ones that um basically were taking higher risks than others, it would, it would just get into the weeds, it would be way too complicated. Supervisor Bone, did you weigh in on that?
I agree with you, uh Chair Fidzikowski, but I have a question for Mr. Krantz. All of the numbers that you've shared with us tonight do not include a one-time uh pay, like we're discussing right at this moment, the 2,500.
Monday night I will be back in the recommendation to the school board on both a one-time pay as well as
Okay.
a possible salary, but not at the numbers y'all were talking about.
Thank you.
There's not enough money to do that for the number of employees that you have. And so I'm sitting here thinking, okay, so if I'm on the other side, I'm looking in like, wow, they got a 3%, they got $2,500. I'm just trying to sort of paint that picture for you guys because we've come so far, where there used to be so much fussing about salaries and such an equity, and we've come so far, and I just hate to see it sort of go down the toilet, I guess that's. But as far as county employees, I mean, I support doing what we, you know, what we can do for them.
Uh, I, I agree with Supervisor Blevins that um, it's not like comparing apples to oranges for sure, but um it's definitely the um, the deputies have taken way more risk. I don't believe a uniform deputy was given the option of working from his house, and I don't believe that a uniform deputy was not required to go in and arrest somebody even if they had COVID. So I, I really think that, uh, and we've all agreed that the 2,500 for them is, is certainly appropriate. I think when it comes to our, our employees, um, I would rather see us give somewhere in the, in the $1,500 range, and then come back with whatever is left in the pot next year, let's say February or March, and see if maybe another one-time supplement would help them out. We are going into some really uncharted territory, um, probably not as uncharted as the uh school division, but certainly we do not know what to expect. And we don't know what our future's going to bring either. So by maximizing, and I say maximizing, but fulfilling our 3% pay raise retroactive, plus adding on top of that is certainly going to um I think it's going to be quite enough, and I think, I don't know if our employees are expecting that or not, but uh we certainly uh, we want to look out for them because they've stuck with us, so we want to stick with them, but that's my thinking, um, that I, I would, I would rather see a, a smaller amount and then revisit it next year with um some of that uh carryover money.
Well, another thing that no one's really mentioned tonight is people outside of government, people that are in our county that have lost their jobs, people that are struggling to keep their businesses, and I, you know, I'm sure they're not going to get a 3% raise or have a big supplement coming their way. I think when you're making decisions like this, you sort of need to look at the whole picture. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
But where would we get that from? And why would waiting another week change that?
Well, I think the majority wants to go ahead and do it, do whatever we're going to do tonight, so I will, you know, I will vote, you know, I'll vote tonight. I mean, the majority wants to go ahead and do something tonight.
But with that said, I mean, is there, do you see that we would benefit from waiting? Do you see a benefit in that?
The only, the only thing I think that would, we would benefit from waiting is to see what the school side might actually do next week, and that might help you in regards to what kind of supplement might be suggested, or it might help you in regards to, you know, like the school board really discussing, are they going to go ahead with their 3%? Because remember, whenever you put a salary into the budget, it's into the next year's budget too.
Right.
And so since we're sort of wading through uncertain times, you know, you got to sort of think about that too. Like, what are we doing? Are we going to be able to make, you know, make that happen again the next year? I mean, just, I don't know. That's the only reason I would think that, you know, we, we might have a better understanding of what was happening, but I don't think that's what, I think the rest of the board, what I'm seeing is you want to make a decision tonight, you want our employees, and I agree, you want our employees to know we're supporting them, you know, I get that. And, and you get something right before Christmas, that's nice, it's going to be a hard time for people, I get, I get all that. I understand.
Has anybody else uh changed their mind on voting on it tonight?
I mean, I feel comfortable that most people would probably agree to vote on the one-time supplement for law enforcement, the 3% raise going back to July 1, and then it's just a matter of figuring out what is the right number, if at all, at this time for the one-time supplement for the employees.
Well, if we don't come to a consensus on that number, we won't be voting on it. So uh I think it's uh
I do like, I do like your compromise. I do like your compromise, Chair Fidzikowski, of making it $1,500 and 750. I, I, I see that that would, uh, and then revisiting, I mean, as an employer myself, I'm not giving my, or I'm not recommending my employees get their whole raise that was in our budget. Now, I'm giving, I'm recommending partial, you know, and that's kind of the one-time supplement, you know, revisiting it next year is the same concept that I'm advocating for my employees too, so that's right along the line.
All right, to uh try to speed up things is, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I've heard a couple of people at 25, a couple of people, one person at 2,000, one at 1,500, maybe a couple at 1,500, and then one at 1,250 for full-time employees.
So if you average that out, I win.
1,500 is not the average of all of that.
I actually like the idea of 1,250. I mean, it's, it's half of what we had hoped to do, and then come February, the other half potentially.
Well, and, and again, my, my thinking on that is if we go through a bad winter and things do worsen, then um when we come out on the other side, then I'm sure our employees could use that. Because to be honest, a 3% raise isn't going to bring their, their paychecks up a significant amount, that yes, it's an increase, but.
I was saying, we're just still in the first quarter.
Yes. That's true. So let me um.
What's the first quarter? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Of the budget?
Budget.
Of our budget?
We're actually the second quarter.
Well, second, wow.
Started second.
Second.
How many would be in favor of a compromise of 1,500 as a um supplement? All right, well, we have four.
So 1,500? 25? 2?
25.
Yeah.
I heard a 2.
If, if you.
I heard a 2.
If you.
I could vote for 2, but I would prefer 2,500.
If this board votes for 1,500, are you going to guarantee me first year we're coming back?
No, and I think that's the whole point, is that we could be able to, right?
Right.
I mean, we may need that money, I mean, I, I get the point, but you know, just don't, don't put all our eggs in one basket, so to speak.
I could vote for 2,000.
I could vote for 2,000.
Let me ask the question again. Would, how many would be in favor of a one-time pay supplement of 2,000? I think we're done.
And we come back first year for the other 5.
Not first, the year February.
The part-time one be then?
And the part-time would be?
Part-time would be.
1,000?
Yeah.
1,000.
Based on the, for those longest email I sent you guys, that would be 641,594 dollars. That would come from the one-time year-end carryover money. Carry for.
Chair Fidzik, Chair Fidzikowski, may I just make sure? So 3% retroactive till July 1st for all county employees, 2,500 full-time, 1,250 part-time hazard pay out of the CARES Act for our sworn, and then 2,000 full-time, 1,000 for part-time for.
That's the way I understand it.
Sorry, my head was spinning.
My head was spinning when Mr. Krantz was throwing out his numbers, because they were a lot bigger than those. All right, did we have any more discussion on uh the budget for CARES Act?
Is this when I bring up the other?
You done spent all the money now?
No, not yet. Still got a lot more to go.
I, I make a motion to end the work session.
I deny.
I think Supervisor King wants to uh bring up another issue.
Two more issues?
Take us to 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
The work session?
That's what he's saying.
Don't you want me to bring it in here now?
So we can vote on who we're going to have? I'm sorry, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I know it's, I'm sorry. It's after 10 o'clock.
I discussed with some of you before the meeting about uh, me and county employees spoke some about the Riner Park. And now this uh 10.3 million dollars may be a good time to start the uh extricate, extirbation and the planning and all for that, since it was next on our big plans to projects to do. And that would move us ahead a little bit. You want to say anything?
And?
I know that the estimate that we had, and I asked Mitchell Hoff to update me on that, the estimate that we had when we reviewed the Riner Park project, uh, total estimate was 6.9 million. Of that, the grading portion, which is, you recall, there's a whole lot of grading that's got to be done on that site to get it developable for ballfields and whatnot. The grading estimate's about 2.1 million. So if the board were to talk about 2.1 million as an allocation, that would allow us to move forward with plans and, and go out to get bids. Now, you know, depending on how the bids come in, we'd have to see how things look, but um that would allow that project to move forward because. But that would allow that project to move forward because the grading is the key component to getting things moving forward with that.
And I see that we had there on the last page, we had deferred 425,000 for the Auburn Park, right?
Yes, sir.
May I add, ask a question or make a comment, please, Chair?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not ready to, to make any decision like that today. Because I want broadband to be part of that conversation. And even though Chair Fidzikowski isn't bringing it up, I think there's a lot of return on investment if we actually put lights down in the Shawsville Creed Fields. There might be some revenue generated by attracting tournaments and things like that sooner to help fund other projects. So I'm, I'm not quite ready. But, you know, if everybody else is ready, I would support Auburn Fields. But that's, that's what I'd like to discuss altogether with some numbers in front of everybody at the same time.
Was there anything else?
No. South Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, can, can we put that to a vote? When we come out of work session, Marty?
It, it's up to the board.
Is there a consensus to do that?
I've got something I'd like to say.
Okay.
Well, I, first, I guess I have a question for Mr. Meadows. Sorry to interrupt. If we were to set aside 2.1, we wouldn't start excavating for a while because you can't do it.
For a while because we've got to get the design plans completed.
And also it's going to be cold and you can't really excavate effectively and efficiently and freezing cold.
I mean, that, that 2.1 would seed the project to get it moving forward with the grading. But no, it wouldn't start tomorrow. The project would start tomorrow, but the grading would be a while, but.
As this board's representative to the Parks and Rec Commission, I can safely say that park expansion and access in Montgomery County is sorely needed for our children who are being booked into very short slots at practice time. They aren't able to practice as often as the teams would like to because we don't have field access for them. So I think doing what we can to move forward is a benefit to all of the kids that play rec sports in Montgomery County and countywide in the two towns. I mean, the more fields that we have, the more kids that can be out on those fields, using those fields, so.
So I guess the question is, do we have a consensus to move forward on this tonight and set that money aside for Auburn Park?
I have a question.
Okay.
That goes back to Sarah. Broadband is like top priority, and I thought we were going to discuss putting aside $500,000 or something into a fund to have that to initiate some broadband activity. Now, are we not going to do that, or is that a different discussion? Or are we bringing up things now that we want to see the money, like Todd had said, the money spent for? Because I really feel very strongly that we need to put aside some money for broadband. I, I think it's critical. We have to have that money and we have to start growing the pot.
Well, and on the slide that Angie has, you know, where we have the 6.7 million balance after potential uses, she mentioned they were examples, and one of the examples is reserve funds, which capital projects, one-time pay supplements, reserve funds. The board can certainly set aside at any time an amount of money for broadband. You know, the, the number that we've talked internally is between a half million and a million. And that money would be used for matching grants. When we have the opportunity to, to receive grant funding, the county will have a match. And that would be a term, you know, even a half million right now would be tremendous seed money to get that moving.
Yeah, don't we need to sort of have that in place so that when we're going out and getting the grants? I mean, don't we need that?
The, the thought has been as we apply for grants, if we're awarded a grant, we'll come back and ask for that money. However, if you've already moved it into reserve, some of that into reserve, that just makes that process easier.
So maybe like, can a compromise be if we put your money in there, Todd? Can we put money in for broadband at the same time?
Sure.
500?
Well, we all know that's, it's critical. It really is a critical thing, and we've been talking about it forever. And if you all want to put that on as a resolution, then we can do that too. And since we can do it at any time in the future also, we could start with 500,000 in there. Is there a consensus to look at that tonight? All right, well, we've got a lot of stuff we're going to be voting on.
And one more thing, then I'll quit.
Make it bounce.
Out of the deferred money that we put back for fire and rescue?
Yes, sir.
I managed that the board consider tonight to turn loose the 1.287704 money so trucks and things can be bought. Since we deferred this money, the prices went up on the vehicles, $2,000 a month. I mean, money's already in the budget. We just need to turn it loose.
Say that again?
1,287,704.
What would that actually buy? Do we know?
Two trucks and ambulances.
And an ambulance.
Well, right now.
I was going to say, right now you can't get them.
This won't buy it.
Right.
Because it's went up just on one truck, it's went up $8,000.
Yeah, prices are going up.
So you might get one truck and an ambulance or?
Well, we may find $8,000 somewhere. There'd be two trucks and one ambulance.
Now, these are, these are vehicles that have already been approved by the vehicle committee.
The Vehicle Commission and the Fire and Rescue Commission. The Vehicle Committee of the Fire and Rescue Commission, yes, sir.
The order, the orders was ready, but then we stopped.
I would vote for that plus the difference because of the inflation tonight, of which could come out of our carryover probably, right? So.
Craig, is this? This, this is money that the task force can't use, part of their CARES Act money?
To be honest with you.
No, it's not CARES Act, it's carryover.
This is operating capital, the dollars from fire and rescue pennies. Thank you.
It was in our budget, so it doesn't count as CARES.
So do we have consensus on voting on that tonight to give the 12, I mean, the 1,000.2? Yeah. Is there consensus to vote on this?
Plus the inflation out of.
Well, you'd have to come up with a number.
Look, my suggestion would be let's use this number for now and let us see.
Okay.
If we need to come back for that, we could, but.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to come out of work session.
Hey, you know I'm done.
Before we, before we go broke?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, call a roll.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
All right, new business. First up is Agriculture and Forestal District, otherwise known as AFD number four. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Secretary?
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
Next up is ADF number three and ADF number five, the combining of the two. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
Next item is Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
So moved, second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? That was a very good presentation. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye. All right, first item up will be, and is there a time limit that they have to be employed? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, on the 3%, it's July 1st, so, but the other two, we need to specify what employees are eligible. Like, what period, area of time were they working here to give them that supplement?
Oh.
If you're off probation, I guess.
So something to, to discuss.
Is there more of them?
I, I make a motion.
Can I ask if Angie can come up to the S2 because?
Yeah, can you give us that?
Yeah, it's complicated, and we want to make sure that.
Oh.
Well, if you're off the CARES Act money, you can't go, you know, what's?
Beyond December 30th. Oh.
Okay, yes, I've been texting with the chair. And just to make sure we're like, kind of on the same page. I haven't told him this last thing, but what the chair's office originally requested was that they would get hazard pay for people that worked from March 16th through July 1st. Well, we've gone a long time past that now. But the CARES Act requires that you say a certain time period that you're going to cover. So he said there's not a whole lot of people that have turned over in that time period. So for the, you help too, okay?
What?
Listen.
I'm listening.
Okay, so we could say that they are getting, the CARES Act is going to cover deputy, sworn deputies from March 16th through July 1st. They would get that $2,500 bonus. And then if there's some people who are now employed, because if you're going to give county employees who are now employed this amount, the deputy should get something. But it doesn't necessarily have to come out of CARES money, it can come out of one-time funding.
So you're saying the ones that weren't employed during that, that were hired after July 1st would receive the 3%?
And $2,500 out of our carryover, not out of CARES funds. They would still, they could still get the same amount of money as all the other sworn officers.
Okay.
It's just switched by.
I, I got it, yeah.
But how much would that be?
2,400.
2,500, oh, how many do you have?
Yeah, how many do you have that are new?
I don't have, I don't have those numbers specifically on me. Probably have hired four or five since July 1st.
Four or five, okay.
And, and we've had some turnover. I've had, I've had three retire recently and a couple have taken jobs out of state, so.
Now, would this resolution be retroactive to people that have left?
If that's the time period.
If it's March 16th to July 1st, yes.
That'll be a surprise.
Ms. Hill, could we actually say that for those people, those four or five people that started in July 1st, could it be a separate resolution? Money's coming from the CARES Act to cover those four or five people, which is only 10, 12 and a half thousand dollars?
No.
Okay.
That is not the best choice because of how the CARES Act is worded. I've talked to auditors about, our auditors about that. And it needs to, the CARES funding needs to be a specific group of people, sworn officers for a certain time period. So that kind of distorts that if you let it come out of that. But if it's four or five people, it's $10,000.
Right, right, I got you.
Does it have?
I, that's fine, I'm, I'm good.
They're going to get $2,000.
They, they don't care where the money comes from, as I say.
25.
25. We'd give them the same.
Yeah.
Just out of a different pot.
That's right.
Can?
Just understand my numbers are an estimate.
Yeah, it's close enough. Go ahead.
Could it, does it have to be March 16th through July 1st? Or could it be March 16th through August 30th?
Well, then they would need to be employed the whole entire time.
Got you.
So, yeah, that's what we chose.
I got you.
We, we talked about that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, well, I'm going to make a stab at it then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
The next item will be hazard pay for sworn deputies of the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office who have been employed from March 16th through July the 1st. And for full-time employees, an amount of 2,500. And for part-time employees, an amount of 1,250. Did I cover it? Sound right?
That sound right? Using CARES Act.
Using CARES Act.
Using CARES Act money.
No, just CARES Act.
Okay.
Just CARES Act for this group.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, call a roll.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
All right, next item will be the 3% pay raise for county employees starting on July 1st of 2020. In the amount of 3%. What am I forgetting on this one?
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
All right.
And the funds would come from the.
Carryover?
No.
The deferred.
The deferred?
Yeah.
It's in the budget.
It, it, there was a discussion earlier, if you recall, the five constitutional officers are not on the county's pay plan anymore. The board elected to take those off, so it does not include the five constitutional officers. But it includes all the other full-time employees on the comp plan and the non-classified part-time employees. Is that right? And classified part-time employees.
Yeah, so, see y'all. So, so what we're, what we want to add is our five constitutional officers.
No, 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 they're not, no, no, no.
But the people that work in their office?
People that, they're on the, they're on the county's just elected pay plan. Just the five elected officers.
All right, did you get all that, Vicki? 3% pay raise starting July 1st for county employees.
We'll have a big meeting in the morning to make sure we've got all the words right.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, any discussion?
Sarah motion first before.
I did.
So I just need a second.
Then that, that would be. Todd, I think he yelled first.
Okay.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, call a roll.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye, with the commitment to see through with the school system, that hopefully their employees can be rewarded also.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
Next item is a one-time pay supplement for Montgomery County employees at the rate of $2,000 for full-time, $1,000 for part-time. Anything else? Any other baggage on that one?
And we'll be back in February.
Current employees. That are currently employed.
That are currently employed.
As of 10/26.
As of the vote, date of this vote, 10/26/20.
Yeah, what he said.
And then also adding deputies who are.
That's a separate one.
Oh, that's a separate one, okay. I got you. Glad you reminded me. All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. I did it again.
You slow down down front. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, call a roll.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bitts?
Aye, with the same commitment to the schools.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
Now, one more pay issue is the $2,500 for sworn deputies that have been employed since July 1st. Is that, am I getting that one right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it is to be all coming, all sworn that are currently on the payroll to be equitable with the county employees. They don't have to have been there since July 1st.
You're saying we could put it all on the first resolution?
No, no, does that not go back, will include the ones they've already voted on for the CARES month? Say all.
All the ones that will not.
The four to five.
So, the next.
John first. Yes.
Thank you.
So the next, so the next item is a one-time pay supplement for sworn deputies.
Employed since July 1st, on or after July 1st.
Thank you.
They're currently employed and not included.
And not included in the hazard for pay. Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, call or roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Ben?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
And the source of those funds are year-end carryover monies, but we know that.
And I'm not sure if this is the last item, but.
No.
This is, is the.
One time.
The park.
You could probably, no. They do them together, the broadband and the park, A and two and 500,000.
We can do it separately. That's fine.
Okay.
All right, next item would be a, what do we call it? Set aside?
An appropriation.
Appropriation to the reserve fund for the Auburn Park in the amount of 2.1 million.
You don't, do you appropriate in the reserve?
Not to the reserve, just appropriate.
Okay, not appropriate.
Well, you are, you, you're just appropriating funds from year-end carryover funds of 2.1 million for the purpose of the Auburn.
County capital projects.
To the county capital projects fund for the Auburn Park project.
But you use the word appropriate.
She did.
Yeah, it's actually a resolution appropriate.
Okay.
Clean it up, clean it up.
You said reserve.
Yeah.
That's the part that was not good.
Okay.
Appropriate.
So, it was my mistake. It's the first time this year.
It's not the reserve part.
That's not bad. Okay. Yeah, did you get all that, Vicki?
We're having a big meeting in the morning to.
Bless your heart. All right, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, call or roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Ben?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
Last item, I think.
No.
It's not broadband?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're taking a broadband.
I'd like to make a motion to put $500,000 into a broadband fund, whatever you want to properly call that.
We didn't do that.
Second.
Thank you. You guys are sharp down there. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on?
And that one is a reserve because it's not, it's being held for future projects yet to be identified.
But you're going to have a meeting in the morning, so.
Yeah.
You're going to straighten all that out for us.
A big, big meeting.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, call or roll.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Ben?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven aunts.
All right, that's it for new business.
Sure.
I'm not sure of anything right now, really. We're going to get our reports. First one up is county attorney.
Yeah, can we go over those seven resolutions?
No.
Not a problem. I have them all memorized now.
Just be here at 8 o'clock in the morning. We got a lot.
Yeah. You all got a lot of writing to do tomorrow, that's for sure.
I'll, I'll report on that later than that.
Our county administrator.
Just one, one thing this evening, and I, I do want to thank the board on behalf of the employees, as I, as I know you guys spent a lot of time deliberating a lot of these issues tonight. Our employees are grateful for anything that this board does for them, and so they'll be extremely pleased with the actions you've taken tonight. It has been a very difficult year. I don't think that the challenges are over yet by any stretch. I think the entire fiscal year is going to be a challenge. You've released some funds to begin moving forward on some projects. You've shown to our employees the value that you place in them, and as county administrator, that means the world to me, so thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, board reports, we'll start with Supervisor King.
No, I have no report, but I do appreciate the support on the parking rinder, and I do appreciate the message we had tonight on the domestic violence. Of course, that, you know, that is, that's something we need to bring out more often